We are live.
All right, thank you very much. Okay, announcement of this meeting, or announcement is made that adequate notice of this meeting has been given and that it is being conducted in accordance with NJSA 10,4-6 at SEC of New Jersey Open Public Meetings Act. We do have this meeting on WebEx and it's available via the link that is also provided on the town's website. Nora, please call the roll.
Mr. Perelich. Councilman D. Piero.
Yeah.
Mr. Dinsmore.
Here.
Mr. Frigieri.
Ton of people from this meeting.
Ms. Hernandez.
Ms. Hernandez. Here.
Dell.
Here.
Mr. Mealy.
Yes, and Vince is here, I'm sorry Nora.
That's okay. Ms. Veely. Chairman Von Aken.
Here.
We also have with us a board planner, Ms. Favate, our engineer, Mr. Canjiano, and our board attorney, Mr. Carlson.
All right, very good. Would everybody please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, and I appreciate Mr. Marucci's flag in the background?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Before we get started with our agenda for today, are there any members of the public who wish to bring up matters which are not on the agenda for tonight? Mr. Earl, could you please make it available so members of the public can raise their hands in case there's any issues they would like to present? Issues not on the agenda.
The raised hand is active.
Okay, not seeing any, we'll close that portion of the public meeting and we'll move on to our agenda items. First matter on the agenda are the resolutions. I believe we have the resolution for Halsey Logistics. Is that correct, Mr. Carlson?
Yes, sir, I circulated it earlier. I hope everyone had a chance to take a look at it. It's pretty straightforward.
Okay. Do any of the board members have a question about the resolution or any, any issues they want to raise? If not, I will accept a motion to accept the resolution.
Before we do that, is Nora, the list of people who are eligible to vote on the Halsey Logistics?
It was, I, at our special meeting, it had been on there. I know who's eligible. You're not, Perelich's not, and Veely's not.
Okay, I didn't think so, but I wanted to. That said, I get all the other motions.
I think it's just this one for tonight, so. As far as the resolutions go, yes. So I'll need somebody who's eligible to vote to present the resolution or make a motion.
This is Mandell, I'm also moved that we accept that one.
Okay, move to accept Resolution 20,508. That's Halsey Logistics LLC, preliminary and finals major site plan with C variances. Do we have a second?
Second for Jerry.
Very good, all right. Nora, let's please call the roll.
D. Piero. Frigieri.
Here, yes, sorry.
Hernandez. Hernandez.
Yes.
Mandell.
Yes.
Mealy.
Yes.
Von Aken.
Yes. All right, resolution is accepted. All right. And then, I believe that's it for the resolutions for tonight, so our next item on the agenda is Application 19,508. Mr. Dominic Barone of 1160 South Beverick Road, Block 757, Lot 54, minor subdivision with C variance. Mr. Barone, are you ready to present?
Actually, Mr. Chairman, it is myself who will be handling it, Joseph O'Neill of Garafalo, Rujirio for the applicant. This is, as you said, a subdivision. We do have some waivers to attend to, I believe. And I'll ask Mr. Marucci to help me out with that.
All right, that's fine. Ms. Favate, would you like to go through the waivers at this time then?
Sure, Mr. Chairman. I guess the one item that we had noted as required that had not previously been provided was the permission to enter property that was provided back in September, I believe, so we have that in the record. There was a series of waivers that we recommended, and I will not list them, but largely because this is not an actual development application, this is purely a subdivision. So waivers, or a lot of the checklist items do not apply. A couple of other items, site photographs, because of the nature of the site, it'd be terribly helpful to get site photographs of woods, so we recommended a waiver of that. And I think the only other one, see, topographic contours actually were provided on the survey. The DEP letter of interpretation, we don't believe wetlands on the property. So that's it, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, so there's no need to look deeper into the wetlands?
I believe that Mr. Canjiano requested testimony on that, so I think that it'd be confirmed, but it can be addressed through testimony rather than, than the letter of interpretation.
Okay, Mr. O'Neill, are you able to provide testimony on wetlands?
Yes, we will discuss that with Mr. Marucci as we do the direct testimony.
Very good, okay, I will, I will accept the motion on the waivers.
Before I move the waivers, I would like to ask a technical question. Because the material I have seems to indicate that this is a five acre lot in the tax map. And of course, it's less than two acres in the application, and I'm just, I'm just a little confused because it looks like there was a subdivision of a five acre lot, Lot 54. And that is not mentioned in any of the material. And that's, it just may be the way that it's presented, it may be perfectly fine. I just would like some clearance or clarity on, on that before I move the waivers.
Well, I think maybe the applicant, the surveyor can address that, or the applicant's engineer can address that. Looks like the, that's taken directly off the township tax map, and I think it's best to have the applicant's engineer address that.
Okay, I mean, as long as you feel comfortable with the way it's presented, I have no problem.
It may not have been updated on the tax map.
Okay. Well, I move the waivers as presented in the memo of September 22nd from BFG Planning.
Do we have a second? Ms. Hernandez, okay. All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? No opposed, okay? Waivers are accepted. Mr. O'Neill, please go ahead and present.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Marucci, why don't you give the board, please, the benefit of your experience? You're on mute there, so.
Looking for my mute button too. I think I need to swear him before he ends.
Oh, we'll get him unmuted here first. There you go.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
I believe I should be sworn in first.
Yes, if you'd raise your right hand, please, Mr. Marucci.
Yes.
Swear the testimony you're about to provide is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Would you state and spell your name for the record, please?
My name is Anthony Marucci. It's spelled M-A-R-U-C-C-I.
And as Mr. O'Neill asked, would you give the board the benefit of your qualifications and experience?
Sure, I, I am licensed as a professional engineer since 1978, as a professional planner since 1979, and as a licensed land surveyor since 1981. For the first 28 years of my, I have a bachelor's degree in civil engineer, civil engineering from NORC College of Engineering, which is now known as NJIT, that was in 1973. From 1973 to the year 2001, for 28 consecutive years, I worked in municipal government. First as an assistant engineer for the City of Orange, an assistant engineer for the Township of South Orange, and then a city engineer for the City of Orange. And the final 13 years of that, of that experience was township engineer for the Township of Bloomfield. In 2001, I formed my own practice of Marucci engineering, and I am a consultant to various towns. I'm the planning board and zoning engineer for the Township of Bloomfield. Consistently since 2001, I served as the planning board and zoning board engineer for the Borough of Caldwell for 10 years up to 2014. And I've presented applications in front of various boards all over state New Jersey, including Parsippany, but not recently in Parsippany.
So I will submit Mr. Marucci as an expert for engineering and planning for the city.
Do any board members have any questions regarding Mr. Marucci's credentials? All right, seeing none, we'll be accepting Mr. Marucci, thank you.
Thank you.
So, Mr. Marucci, why don't you walk us through what it is we're proposing here on this undeveloped lot down south.
Sure, sure, I just wanted to clarify, Mr. Canjiano was correct in that the tax maps were not updated, unfortunately. There was a subdivision prior to this one, and our property right now is 84,000 plus square feet. There was a subdivision prior. If I could just give a little bit of history. The properties between Sunrise and Leonard Way over the last, I'll, I'll say over the last 20 years, have been subdivided and, and, and at various times, including by my clients a number of years ago. Our property, 1162, 1160 South Beverick Road, used to go from South Beverick Road all the way past Philip Drive. And we came in a number of years ago and extended Philip Drive, and that's when one of the subdivisions occurred that, that cut off our lot. Another developer, Sunrise, came in from the other side and created a cul-de-sac on Philip Drive, so over two or three subdivisions, these properties were carved out, and now the last, if I guess to call it the last piece of the puzzle, is our property that's left over. And that's why we're proposing this last subdivision that will create a flag lot. And it's not unusual to have flag lots here. The property just to the north of ours is a flag lodge that was cut off, and the back piece comes in from Philip Drive. So it's not unusual of what we're asking for in terms of a, of a flag lot.
Now, Mr. Marucci, can I get you to put up the, the plans?
You know, I'm gonna be very honest with you, I, I'm very new at this. I have the plans. My sons are not available right now, and, and I don't know if I can do it, to be honest with you.
Well, we got you backed up, Mr. Hoffker. Could you make me, give me the ability to share the plans? Or I guess, Mr. Chairman, you have the power to appoint me so I can present?
I'll present them as long as you can put, okay, I guess you'll be putting them up.
I'll put them up.
I do not see that I have the ability to elevate you to present to Mr. O'Neill.
Okay, so hold on one second.
Mr. O'Neill, you are now a presenter.
Thank you. Let's see if I can do that. Oh, here we go. Ah ha. So looking at this, this is the second or the third page of the plans. That's the existing lot right now, the second page, isn't that true, Mr. Marucci?
Yes, it is.
So that's where we're at right now. Why don't you walk us through the, the, I'll actually go back to the original first page, and this shows what you were just describing. Could you orient us again with the reference map?
Yes, the first page basically has the 200-foot radius of the properties that surround us and also the zoning information and the list of property owners within that 200 feet. And as I was explaining before, you, you see Sunrise and you see Leonard Way, and then these lots were created in between. We, we extended Philip Drive, and again, unfortunately, your tax maps were not updated. But at the end of Philip Drive there is a cul-de-sac and a portion of our previous existing subject property went all the way back to Philip Drive. Just to give you an idea, now, now we can go to the actual subdivision if you'd like. We're proposing, because we have such a large property, we, Mr. Barone would like to subdivide it into two lots. I mean, we have enough area, we have over 84,260 square feet in a zone that only requires 30,000 square feet. It's, that's almost three lots if you, if you did the, just by numbers. Unfortunately, we don't have the lot width. It's a very unusual lot because it's narrow but very deep. And it's 150 at the right-of-way. And the side, on the south side is about 526 feet, on the north side it's 564 feet with an average of about 545 feet in depth. And that's.
Describe the topography that we're looking at here, Mr. Marucci?
From South Beverick Road going back, it's almost, I'll pull it flat until you get towards the rear of the property where it starts to go, to go down towards the west. But there are no steep slopes, it's a very gradual slope. The area where we would be building would be in, in front of the slope anyway. I, I, the sloped area is mostly wooded back there, so it would remain wooded. The two new houses would be closer to the, to the east instead of that, that sloped area.
There are wetlands in the area, but not on the property, right?
Well, again, I was involved with the previous subdivisions, and the wetlands were on the property that's to the west of us. I, I don't have it with me, I do have a copy of it, but there are no wetlands on, on the subject property today, no.
It's basically up where I'm indicating right now at the top left of the page, right?
Yes.
But there's no wetlands on this, and in fact, the property slopes down to the back and continues sloping down into the wetlands.
That's correct.
Which is well off the property.
It is well off the property, that is correct.
We're not a, we're not affected by any wetlands buffers or anything like that?
No, not at all. Again, all the wetlands and the buffers, transition areas, they're all off our property.
What about the front of the property? It's all flat up here, there's no wetlands or?
There are no wetlands, as a matter of fact. At, at one point, around 2006, there was a house on that property that Mr. Barone had demolished.
Okay. So what variances are we generating here with this subdivision?
The only variances deal with lot width. We need 150 feet of lot width, which we have 159. We're proposing a lot width on the flag lot of 25.01 feet. And on the front lot, the remainder, which is, just give me a second. I'm sorry. There's an angle point in there, so it's. I thought I wrote it down, it's, I apologize. It's 58, it's 58 and 75, so it's 3, 133, almost 134 feet. I apologize, I didn't, I didn't add them up. Because there's an angle point in there. So we, we need 150, we're gonna have approximately 134 feet on the front lot, and we have the flag lot with a 25. And that's, and, and Mr. Barone wanted that so that there'd be enough room for two-way traffic or to be able to go into the back lot.
So is it 24.3 or 25 for that?
It's, it's 25.01 on it, on the right-of-way. When you measure it at right angles, it would be 24 feet wide.
Okay. All right. Otherwise, it's a conforming subdivision.
It's conforming with respect to lot areas and any other bulk requirements.
Now, what about this neighborhood? You mentioned that there are other flag lots in the area?
Directly to the north of us, that's a flag lodge. It's a wider flag lodge, but it's still a flag lodge. And again, unfortunately, because the tax maps weren't revised, the back portion is another lot that comes in from Philip Drive, which is also a flag, a flag lodge.
So this is not unusual in this area?
It's not unusual, and again, if the board would grant it, it would be the last piece of the, what I call the puzzle, this, this entire neighborhood would be developed at that point.
Just emphasize again, the width of the flag lodge in the front allows for two-way traffic there?
Yes.
I have no further questions for this witness.
All right. Any members of the boards have, board have questions for Mr. Marucci?
I do, I do.
Go ahead, Judy.
Chairman, okay, hello, we're creating two non-conforming lots, create the need in the future for additional variances whenever you want to build? I guess that's a general question for anybody else on the board too. Or the lawyer, or Andrew.
In, in my opinion, there would be no variances.
There would be no variances.
When you go to build of, of two houses, two houses on these lots? Well, with setbacks or impervious coverage, I'm wondering like, will there be? If they're non-conforming sites, if we make two non-conforming sites, I was just thinking in the, in the future, when you come to build and it comes before the board, will you need variances?
If I.
Size of the properties.
If I may, the only variances that we're requesting.
That we're requesting.
Is the lot.
Is the lot. Width.
The lot areas are both conforming.
Conforming.
And, and we would meet all the bulk and setback requirements for both lots.
Mr. Chairman, if I may follow on to Judy's question?
Please go ahead, Mr. Mandell.
The proposed driveway for the flag lot is over 7,000 square feet. Will that not trigger impervious coverage for the second dwelling?
We're, we're allowed a lot coverage of 20%. That's why we, that's why we made that lot much larger so that we would not have that problem. That lot is almost 50,000 square feet. And, and that gives you a total lot coverage of, of 20%, of 10,000 square feet, so I think there's, there's plenty of room there.
So 7,000 of that 10,000 is going to be taken up with the driveway?
Well, I don't know if it's, if the driveway doesn't have to be 24, 24 foot wide, it's just for two-way traffic. Remember, this is a single-family home. This isn't a, a, a commercial site. I gave it a 24-foot width in terms of the property, but the driveway itself does not have to be 24 feet wide. 18 feet can handle two-way traffic for a single-family home. It's just the idea that you don't want to drive up and, and, and have to back up to, in other words, you want to be able to maneuver two cars in there. But it doesn't have to be 24 foot wide in terms of the paved area.
Okay.
I have a question. Joe, could you go back to the drawing with Philip Drive on it?
Sure, Philip Drive might be off the page, but I'll see. Oh, there it is, yes. Right here.
Now, you said that this map is not complete, that Philip Drive extends past the other lot. Does, does this back lot connect to Philip Drive? Go up to Philip Drive?
Philip Drive continues to the back of that lot. And then there's a cul-de-sac because again, there were, there are a few lots created by a developer by the.
Yeah, what I'm asking is, when you do your subdivision, your back lot, does that front on or, or back on Philip Drive?
No. It comes out the Beverick. We, we don't have, we're not part of that anymore. That's not part of us anymore.
So this, this gray area here is the lot where we're.
Doesn't go back that far, okay.
Like, this is the other lot, the cul-de-sac comes up here.
I got you, that's a different lot.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Chairman, it may be helpful, somebody has just a Google map available. It is showing on existing aerial photography that you can see exactly where Philip Drive, because it's been extended to.
That's all right, it doesn't, it doesn't affect this property anymore, so I'm no longer interested in it.
All right.
I'm limited to my technical capacity here right now with this.
Any other members of the board with a question? All right, it, it does seem as if the.
Chairman, it's Andrew Canjiano, the board engineer. I did have a follow-up question on the driveway. It was one of my comments or questions on the letter there.
Please go ahead.
On the driveway location, on the survey, you show, it looks like a culvert pipe, a small pipe crossing South Beverick Road. And then from the topography right there at that beginning of the flag lot, contour line 205, it looks like it's a swale, and that's like a little bit of a water course. Can you give us a little bit more information on that, and if there's any kind of flood hazard area permitting required for that, do you anticipate?
Mr. Canjiano, that situation is that the county put a drainage pipe across Beverick Road from the other side, and it's just kind of dumping in our property. I don't think we need any, any flood hazard data, but I have to deal, hopefully with the approval by this board. My, my next step is to deal with the county on how to address that, and, and I believe the way we're gonna have to address it is to capture the water where it comes out of that, that pipe and bring it to the nearest catch basin to the south. There's a catch basin just off our property to the south there, and, and, and take care of that problem.
Okay, so you'll redirect that across your frontage to that catch basin within the. Okay, so you'll redirect that uh across your frontage to that catch basin within the right away there.
I think that's the only thing we can do, yes.
All right, thank you.
Okay, Mr. Cagiano, any other questions?
No, but just typically, we do like to see, it's not a, I don't believe it's a requirement in the checklist, but we do like to see the the conceptual house uh uh plan uh on on these subdivisions, because it does help the board um uh to make a decision, um so that that's, you know.
My my only, my my only response there is I, I'm not sure if Mr. Brown wants to build or when he wants to build these, he, you know, I'll defer to him on that, but as there is gonna come a time where we're gonna have to develop actual grading plans and and uh a- and and provide for stormwater management also.
Yeah, and that's what I was getting at. Obviously, these plans will will need to come back uh to the township for lock rating plans, and should they meet the um thresholds for stormwater management, full stormwater management uh that needs to be done, they will have to to to, that will have to be addressed at that time under that review.
Okay. Uh Ms. Vivate, did you have any uh additional questions?
Yeah, the only one we had, um and I think it follows along with Andrew's comment, we just made this, whether the is, is interested in the the applicant we can provide, uh you know, conceptual building envelopes at the very least. We, you know, we have the zoning envelope, but I think that uh Mr. Marucci, you indicated that where the actual homes would be located would be, you know, pretty well out of that um you know, slope area, it's not steep slope, but it's, you know, it is a slope um for the flag lot, and I believe for the other one, it would be um maybe toward the rear of that that lot, or I I'm I'm just not a hundred percent sure. Do you actually wanna go?
I- in my opinion, would have to meet the minimum setback uh but a- and and provide for a rear yard, so it would be most likely towards the middle of the lot.
Right, so I think it would be helpful for the board to see that, um in particular, to think about uh limits of disturbance, given that this is, you know, wooded, fairly undisturbed area, um you know, at least in the rear of the the overall property. And I think that 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 would be instructive for um, you know, thinking about tree removal and and other impacts of disturbance.
Well, this is a subdivision of this, so the tree removal plans all need to be addressed in the uh in the site plan. Believe Mr. Marucci is indicating, we've got pretty big uh areas where we can disturb here for the homes. You wanna see conceptual architecture play out to that house?
No, I I, well, we often do see actual architecture, but I understand if the applicant is not, you know, in a place where he actually has building plans. Um but I I think your speaking concern is that you, there's a lot of, there's a lot of area, and thus there's a lot of potential for pretty significant disturbance um to build these two homes, and I think it would give some assurance as to what that that uh disturbance might be, if we could see, you know, that it's limited to certain areas of the lots.
All right.
Well, if I may, I mean, we we would be limited to just the area where the houses go as far as any kind of limit of disturbance. We also have to deal with your forester, right? I saw that in one of the reports. So we wouldn't have to deal with your foresters, not like we're gonna just go and take down trees uh uh, you know, nonchalantly, it it, we're gonna, we're gonna be. I again, I I don't think Mr. Brown has any plans for construction at this time, and I'll, I have to defer to him on that. Um maybe, Mr. O'Neil, maybe you can respond to that, cause I, you know, without having any any house plan, it's hard to uh uh to to show a limit of disturbance.
Yes. I think what we'll do is we'll finish up with Mr. Marucci, then uh, yeah, I'll have an opportunity to talk to Mr. Barone.
Okay.
Okay, thank you. I, in terms of the the overall lot width, it it does appear that it um i- if we were to put the two together, the existing lot is one fifty four a- and change. Um so uh overall, the lot width is okay in the, what I'll call the western lot. Um there's, they're a lot closer to the streets, one, I guess, has the challenge with the uh with the one hundred thirty feet. Um considering Mr. Mandell's question about um impervious coverage, I do we have any uh concerns about the layout that you have prescribed here at this time, or or do you think you're still ready to continue? This impervious coverage would seem to be a a concern.
Well, again, when we come in with a a building plan, we would have to meet the the impervious coverage based on your ordinance. If we don't, then we'd have to come back to the board, whether it's your board or the zoning board to to get a variance, and I don't, I don't think, I don't think we wanna do that. I don't, I I I don't see any reason to do that. I I I I believe we have to meet your ordinance.
Uh, that's correct, and and I that I just wanna give you an opportunity to evaluate that, considering the property that I see, um the northernmost property which you referenced uh is quite substantial in terms of its its uh footprint. If you were looking to do something similar, you might come up against variances.
A- a- and that that that's a good point, because we have that long stem, and we're gonna be u- using a a lot of that stem for the driveway, that is gonna limit us to the rear. A- as your planner had said, as far as a disturbance, we're gonna be limited to the to the disturbance because of of the lot uh lot coverage uh percentage.
Okay, cause if we were to move forward with the subdivision, we don't change it again. I just wanna make sure this is, you know, having considered the things that have been brought up, you're still good with the um application as it stands. Maybe that's a question for Mr. O'Neil.
Well, I'm relying on Mr. Marucci here for this.
Okay.
So tell me if I'm running into trouble.
If I, a- as I stated from the beginning, in my opinion, this is the last piece of the puzzle for this property, I wouldn't change it, uh I don't think it can be changed any further.
Okay. All right, understood, thank you. Uh, were there any other questions from the members of the board for Mr. Marucci? Okay, I, if we were in person, we were nor- normally open this up to questions from the public, we'll hold on to that until the um uh the applicant has been able to present all of their witnesses, if, Mr. O'Neil, if that's okay with you?
That's okay, I wasn't uh planning on calling any other witnesses, though, Mr. Chairman.
Oh, okay. All right.
Karen, good. Um, Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Mr. Mandell.
Can we get an idea from the property owners, uh as to their timeline for building?
Well, let's bring out Mr. Barone, then, I think we should have. Mr. Barone?
Yes, sir, I'm on.
We're gonna need to get you sworn in a little bit here.
Scott Carlson, the Board Attorney, if you'd raise your right hand, please. Do you swear the testimony you're about to provide is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes, I do.
Would you state and spell your name for the record, please?
Sure, Dominic Barone, D O M I N I C K, Barone, B A R O N E.
You can begin, Mr. O'Neil.
Thank you, Mr. Barone, uh, there was a question about your timeline for uh construction, have you given that any thought?
As of now, um, not really.
Are you uh planning to market the properties at some point? Is that the initial plan?
Um, right now, just. Right now, no, I'm just uh looking to uh get a subdivision and take it from there.
All right. You heard the comment regarding uh showing a representative footprint for a house on each one, in each one of these uh building envelopes here, where I'm indicating. Have you uh done any preliminary plans or any preliminary architectural plans?
No, sir.
So it's pretty much what we have here.
Correct.
And you don't intend, uh, at this point, you don't see any reason to come back for any additional variances as part of any site plans or grading plans?
Correct.
Thanks, I have no further questions for this witness.
Uh, any questions from the members of the board or our professionals?
Well, I I'd say Andrew Cagiano again, and I just did a quick napkin takeoff. You're probably looking at about over three hundred and fifty feet from the frontage of this um proposed to the rear lot to where you'd have your building envelope, which would be, as Mr. Mandell stated, it's probably a close to six thousand square feet of driveway, if you're gonna have that eighteen-foot driveway. So from, this is from Mr. Marucci, so do you feel from this layout, you can provide uh the remaining improvements uh within that lot, it's about four thousand square feet available, if you use up the um, if you, if you're you're allowed almost ten thousand square feet for that lot, you're using up five to six thousand square feet for your driveway, do you feel you can put your proposed improvement to the footprint of the house, walks, uh decks and the like um without needing a an additional coverage variance?
Well, a- as you just said, you you calculated approximately six thousand square feet for the driveway, and and we have four thousand left. Even if the footprint of the house is two thousand, it still leaves me another two thousand uh for other decks, et cetera. I I believe we have enough.
Okay.
I do believe we have enough.
Thank you.
Okay, uh, any other members of the board?
Mr. Chairman, Mr. Mealy.
Please go ahead, Mr. Mealy.
Uh, there was some discussion about narrowing that driveway from twenty-four feet to eighteen feet. Is that something that would have to be brought in front of the District Six Fire Chief, since he has already approved what is shown? I don't know.
Good question.
Well, this is actually a site plan, Mr. Mel, issue that would be addressed at that point. Uh, we're not changing the width of the the flag lot there in the front to allow, it doesn't have to be twenty-four feet, and certainly any site plan would be subject to the fire department's comments or concerns.
Fire chief, Mr. O'Neil.
Uh, Mr. O'Neil, if I may, though, I I I think the concern is, we don't want your property to be um unusable if we orient the flag part of this incorrectly. By not making it wide enough.
Uh, Mr. Marucci, is this wide enough for emergency vehicles?
Well, i- i- eighteen feet uh for the width of the actual driveway is is more than a lane on on a on a roadway. I mean, a of a a a lane on the highway is twelve feet wide, so I I think if a fire engine had to get back there, it would be able to get back there. I really don't see a a an issue.
But there's, you could certainly go all the way to twenty-four feet wide if necessary.
If necessary, yes, but again, I I I I don't think we have to, and it it. I could deal with the fire department.
That's two lanes on the highway, you're saying this is gonna be wide, as wide as two lanes on the highway?
No, no, I said it, I said on a highway, a lane is twelve foot wide, so the, if if a if a fire engine can can drive in a twelve-foot wide lane, it's gonna be uh it's also gonna be okay to be in a in an eighteen-foot lane. Right, obvi- obviously, if there's an emergency, you're not gonna have a vehicles going in and out, it's gonna be a fire engine going in there.
All right.
Okay. Any other questions from the board or our professionals? Mr. O'Neil, do you have any other witnesses?
Uh, no, Mr. Chairman, that concludes our presentation for this evening.
Okay, well, in that case, I would like it, like to open things up to the public for questions of our witnesses. If you have any questions for the witnesses of this uh presentation, please go ahead and raise your hands as soon as uh Earl is able to uh make that available to you.
You have one hand raised now, Jackie Abam.
Mr. Obama, or Miss, Miss Obama, Jackie, all right, go ahead. Please give your name and uh and your address.
Sure, uh, my name is Jackie Abam, um, Fort Sunrise Drive, Porcepani, New Jersey, and my husband's name is Charles Abam.
Thank you very much. What's your, what's your question or comment?
So my husband and I just, uh, we've been in this house just a week, and um the former owners of the house, the C. Delers, gave us a letter um about the prospects of the building of uh the subdivision. So if you can remember, early this week, there was some rains, and um my question to the engineer um based on what I know, I've lived in Porcepani for sixteen years, even though I just moved to Sunrise Drive, I know we are surrounded by lots of wetlands. And what I noticed behind my house this week was a lot of water. And by virtue of the fact that this subdivision is going to be developed right behind my house, I'm just concerned, because of course, we've been losing trees, we've been, we'll be losing some um you know, nature, how's that gonna affect me and my property and my family? So I just, I'm just concerned, because I've just been in this house for a week, and I don't know, you know, I'm concerned, so I just wanna know, based on your expertise, I'm a scientist, I don't know much about engineering. But based on what I saw behind my house this week when it rained, I'm just very concerned, so can you explain to me how you're going to manage the water problem? And also the privacy, um Ms. Favid actually talked about disturbances, how is that going to affect me and the privacy of my family? So if you can answer that, that would be great.
Uh, man, before he answers, could I ask you to uh give us some idea where you are on the map that's up on the screen, so we can know what we're talking about?
Sure, Mr. O'Neil, I'm actually the second lot, so lot fifty-five, number two.
This lot here?
Yes, please.
Okay, thanks a lot. Go ahead, Mr. Marucci.
Well, with respect to drainage, as I stated from the beginning, uh when when these lots are developed, we have to supply grading plans to the township engineer or to Mr. Cagiano, I'm not sure which which engineer will be handling it. Uh, but we have to develop a stormwater management plan for each lot, so we cannot divert water onto your property. I I don't know, I I don't know your property right now, I I haven't been out there, obviously, and I don't know why you have any any water back there, but we cannot divert any water towards your property. Uh, we have to develop a a stormwater management plan for each lot that we we propose.
So another question my husband and I had was, um based, I'm just looking at the uh map you kindly showed us here, um by virtue of privacy, how are those homes going to be located? Um, is it the front house facing the back of my house? Because um based on the lot, that would be the back of my house uh facing those properties, so will I be facing the back of those homes? You know, will I need my kitchen, and I'll be, you know, the neighbors are looking right into my kitchen with my two girls, I I, you know, I'm just very confused at this point.
Both lots would face, in my opinion, both lots would face South Beverick Road, they would not face your your house or your property. And with respect to privacy, we have to maintain the, at least the minimum side yard, and again, we don't, I don't have any plans for any houses yet. But we have to main, we have to maintain at least the minimum side yard, if not more. And at that time, uh whoever builds is, will have to maintain that buffer first of all, and uh and and hopefully put landscaping there also uh to 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 protect you.
Charlie, do you have any questions for them? Um, so with the timeline, just to be fair to us, um, do you happen to know, Mr. Marucci, when this will be happening?
I I I cannot answer that, I I as, as Mr. Brown said, he has no plans right now for any development yet.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Do any other members of the public have questions at this? Do any other members of the public have questions at this time? Okay. Seeing no other hands raised and Mr. O'Neil, I believe you've completed your presentation.
Yes, we have, Mr. Chairman. I, as Mr. Marucci said, this is a common configuration in this general area with these lots. We don't have any wetlands on our property, but we acknowledge there are wetlands off these properties in the area. As he indicated, any ultimate development that would be subject to a site plan is not going to be contributing to those issues in the wetlands. So we would hope that this board would see fit to grant these variances and allow this subdivision tonight.
Okay. Any comments from the board members?
I have a comment, Chairman.
Oh, please go ahead, Ms. Hernandez.
I just, just a comment, especially after listening to the resident that just spoke from Forest Sunrise. I went out to the site, there are fragmatties on the site, those plants that are typically in wetlands. If she's seeing water in her back, and I wouldn't be surprised, it is near wetland area. And so maybe it's not a DEP regulated wetland area, but that's going to be a consideration, especially if they're cutting down a lot of trees. So I'm hoping that they do work with the forester and come up with a really good stormwater plan. And we're going to, as a board, it'll come, probably come before us, but I could understand her concern. If you went out there, you would see the fragmatties out there and maybe they grow without, not in wetlands, but they typically are a wetland reed. That's it. That's all I have to say.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Hernandez. I'll accept the motion on this application if there's no other comments.
Were there any, any special things that we were asking the applicant to do if we agree to this?
If I may, it seems that the only thing I've heard is that we're going to ask the applicant to work with the township forester on a planning plan that will mitigate water and improve drainage.
Is that something that would be done only upon the development of a site plan rather than just the subdivision?
That's correct. And we'd say, you know, in connection with any development that they'll consult with the forester.
I would move in the case of.
Tom, one sec. I think I see Judy trying to raise her hand.
I, I think we also mentioned about not disturbing the slopes where possible, you know, trying to disturb some of the slopes, even though they might not exceed the 15, but that was also mentioned in the planner's memo.
Very well. Mr. O'Neil, are you okay with those?
Yes, we are. Thank you.
All right, Mr. Dinsmore?
I was going to say, with those two, two items included in the resolution, I move that we grant in application 19:508, minor subdivision, would see variance for Block 757, Lot 54, 1160, South Beverick Road.
Do we have a second for Mr. Dinsmore's motion?
Second, Mandel.
Right. Laura, would you please take the vote?
Mr. Parawak.
Yes.
Councilman De Piero.
Yes.
Mr. Dinsmore.
Yes.
Mr. Fergieri.
Yeah, yes.
Ms. Hernandez.
Say that again, Judy.
Yes. Mr. Mandel.
And I don't want to shovel the snow on that driveway.
Is that a yes?
That's a yes.
Mr. Mealy.
Yes.
Chairman Von Aiken.
Yes.
Thank you, everyone. Have a great night.
Okay.
Thank you.
Mr. O'Neil, thank you, Mr. Brown and Mr. Marucci.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, gentlemen and ladies and gentlemen, thank you.
Okay, moving on, I'm going to ask if any of the members of the board need a break of any kind before our next application?
No, keep going.
All right. Well, then I will take my cue from you. The next application we have coming before us is 20:524, Lidl U.S. Operations, 435 North Beverick Road, Block 483, Lot 1, preliminary and final major site plan with C. variance. Major soil moving permit also.
Good evening, Chairman. John Witschka on behalf of Lidl U.S. Operations LLC.
Nice to have you with us, sir.
It's great to be here. Thank you very much. Chairman, I'm just going to give a brief summary of the application and then we'll touch on the waivers if that's okay with you.
That's perfect.
Great. So just a little bit of the background here, Lidl is the contract purchaser of the property you just identified. It's at 435 North Beverick Road in Lake Hiawatha. It is identified as Block 483, Lot 1 on the township's tax map, and the property is located in your B3 Zone District. I know you're all familiar with the property. It's about 2.9 acres in size and it is currently developed with an approximately 30,600 square foot super food town supermarket. This particular site is almost entirely developed. It's got an impervious coverage of just over 95%. We are here before you this evening to present this application seeking preliminary and final site plans, plan approval with the variance relief and the soil movement permit to permit the development of a new 31,000 square foot Lidl grocery store on the subject property. And this is a use that is permitted in your B3 Zone District. And obviously, it's, it's, it's been in operation as a supermarket for many years. A little bit about Lidl, you'll hear more, but it is a worldwide grocery business. They've got thousands of stores across Europe and a growing presence here in the United States and particularly in New Jersey. If approved, this will be one of Lidl's first store locations in Morris County. So we are excited to be here before you tonight. Over the course of the hearing, I will have five witnesses. You're going to hear from our Matt Sandelins, he's a real estate manager with Lidl. He's going to speak a little bit to the history, the nature of the business and really just the day-to-day operations that you would expect to see at this location if the project's approved. We've got Ben Crowder, civil engineer with Bowler Engineering. He prepared the plans. He's going to provide testimony going over the existing site conditions and the overall proposed project. Ben is also going to touch and elaborate on some of the aspects of the business operations, including deliveries, trash, recycling, things of that nature. We're also joined by Jared Dinan, he's a traffic engineer with Atlantic Traffic. They prepared the traffic impact study and he'll speak to things like traffic generation and in particular, the parking demand. We do have a C. variance with respect to total parking on site. We also have Chelsea Rawson, she's our project architect with Larson Design Group. She's going to provide a overall view of the building architecture, the interior floor plans, the rooftop plan. We do have an alternative plan as well, where we modified one of the building facades at the suggestion of your planner. And last but not least, we're joined by John McDonough, he's our professional planner and he'll go through all the variance relief requested. So that's basically the team, that's our lineup. We do have a number of waivers and they're actually referenced on page two of your planner's report. I can just roll through them quickly. Nine and 10 pertain, pertain to outside agency approvals, including the Morris County Planning Board. We did make our county planning board submittal. County Planning Board approved the project back on October 27th and that report was submitted directly to the board. We've requested a waiver with respect to a DEP letter of interpretation. The site is entirely developed, as I indicated, and you know, we don't believe there are any wetlands on site that impacted. You'll hear a little bit anyway from our engineer tonight, just regarding overall outside permitting and the like. Comment 14 or item 14 on, on the general checklist is floor plans. That actually technically requires floor plans of the existing structure and the proposed structure. We've only included the proposed floor plans because the existing food town is proposed to be demolished and removed. And I think that waiver was recommended. We've also recommended a, requested a waiver of temporary construction, structures and storage. These are details that would typically be provided by the building contractor with the projects approved and we're pulling building permits and, you know, having pre-construction meetings, but our engineer can touch on that a little bit as well. We've requested a waiver of an environmental assessment study, again, because of the nature of this site being 95% impervious, there really are no undisturbed natural features. And then the last couple waivers are waivers just due to the fact that we're simultaneously seeking preliminary and final site plan approval. And you know, as a result, we don't, we won't have a plan that shows compliance with a preliminary.
Ms. Pavate, did he miss anything?
He did not. Thank you.
All right, very good. With that in mind, any questions from the members of the board with regard to the waivers? Accept the motion to accept the motion, accept the waivers?
Mr. Chairman, I move the waivers as presented in the BFG planning memo of October 23rd, 2020.
Do we have a second?
Second, Mandel.
All right, I think I heard Mr. Mealy.
Yes.
And we'll just do all in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? None. Okay. Waivers are accepted. Please move on.
Okay, thank you very much. I'd like to call my first witness, Matt Sandelins, to be sworn and we are offering Matt as a fact witness. He's not being offered as an expert.
Thank you, Mr. Witschka. Sir, if you'd raise your right hand, please. You swear the testimony you're about to provide is the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Would you state and spell your name for the record, please?
Matthew Sandelands, Matthew, M.A.T.T.H.E.W., Sandelands, S.A.N.D.E.L.A.N.D.S.
Mr. Witschka, you said fact witness, correct?
Correct.
All yours.
All right, thank you, Mr. Carlson. Mr. Sandelands, why don't you just provide the board, if you will, just an overview what your role is with Lidl, what you do and maybe a little bit of the history of Lidl, just generally speaking?
Sure, sounds good. I am a real estate manager here at Lidl. We have a regional real estate office here in Bayonne, New Jersey. As a real estate manager, I identify sites for new stores and oversight of land use approvals for, for new grocery store locations here in the Northern New Jersey section. And I'll provide a little bit of history here for Lidl. The first modern Lidl grocery store opened in a small town in Germany in 1973. So over the past 40 years, we've expanded worldwide. We have over 11,000 stores in 32 countries, employing a little over 300,000 people globally. We came to the United States about seven years ago. We currently have 122 stores open and operating up and down the East Coast. We have seven here in Northern New Jersey with about another four to five that are actively under construction or otherwise approved for construction here in Northern New Jersey. If approved here in Parsippany, Troy Hills, the store will be one of the first in Morris County and we are, we are very excited to be here. So one of, one of Lidl's biggest values that I can represent is that we have, we're 80 to 85% private label, which allows us to keep our costs down and offer our customers the highest quality products at some of the lowest prices possible. We partner with local and regional farms and suppliers that meet the company's certain requirements for quality and freshness. We also have a large organic selection and a bakery where our store employees bake on premises every day.
And Mr. Sandelands, as a preliminary matter, what would the proposed store hours be at this location?
The store hours would be 8:00 AM to 10:00 PM, seven days a week.
And how many new jobs would you expect to create at this location?
Yeah, generally we expect to create 50 to 100 new jobs with the, with the mix of full and part-time employees.
And you generally hire from the local community?
Yeah, we definitely expect to, to hire a majority of our new employees from the Parsippany area.
And just in terms of number of employees, what would you expect the maximum number of employees like per shift to be?
Sure, at this location, we can probably expect around 10 to 12 employees to be on staff at any given time during the normal course of the day. We'll generally have four or five employees there in the, in the stores early at 6:00 AM to take our deliveries and to stock the shelves for the day.
Okay. And can you just describe the roles of those employees that will be working over the course of the day?
Yeah, again, it will depend on the time of the day and how busy our operations are there, but generally speaking, we'll always have one floor manager there on site during the business day. We also have our stock employees who are responsible for stocking the shelves and keeping the floors clean, which we take very seriously. Usually four or five stalkers. These individuals are also periodically sweeping the parking lot areas for getting carts and picking up trash, et cetera. We have one, two employees that work in the bakery, also depending on store volume. And then we have our checkout personnel and the number of which will depend on the time of the day and the business of the store. And then besides for, for cleaning, besides a regular and constant daily cleaning, we engage in supplemental cleaning, which may extend beyond the normal workday. Since March from COVID, we've obviously engaged in a regular COVID sanitation effort to keep our employees and customers safe.
Good. And just relative to the, to the store itself, a lot of the larger supermarkets and grocers in the area have major prepared food departments, including deli counters and a variety of all their prepared foods. You know, they're, they're using grills, they've got fryers, baking on premises. Does Lidl provide this type of prepared food service or that volume?
No, the only cooking that's performed in our, in our grocery stores is the baking of our fresh breads and bread products. Otherwise, we are a true grocery store with products on the shelves for our customers. And as I mentioned earlier, we have a large, very large selection of organic fruits and vegetables as well.
And you mentioned earlier that you do have employees that are in the store, you know, as early as 6:00 AM in the pre-opening hours to take deliveries, stock the shelves. Can you touch, touch a little bit on deliveries? How many deliveries do you typically get per week? What type of vehicles are coming and going?
Yeah, we generally get one tractor trailer delivery per day at the store, which contains the, the bulk of our Lidl branded products. That delivery will generally be in the six to 7:00 AM timeframe before the store opens. On occasion, we might have additional delivery, which would be coordinated by our onsite floor manager for an off-peak hour. Our engineer will provide more detail on the size of the delivery vehicle when he speaks in a bit.
And just regard, and if I might just ask you there, Mr. Sandelands, you mentioned your floor manager being able to coordinate to make sure it's an off-peak delivery. That's because it is your Lidl branded products and you do have the ability to control that delivery vehicle when it comes into the site, is that correct?
Correct, yeah. We have, we have our own distribution centers where our products come from, so we're able to control the whole process.
Okay, great. And, and what about any non-Lidl deliveries?
Yeah, we do get some non-Lidl product deliveries that are, the specially branded products that we do carry, that might be about one to two times a week, depending on the store volume. Those deliveries are similarly coordinated for, for off-peak hours to not disturb our customers.
And just speaking of that, I know, again, larger supermarket chains and so forth that don't have their own branded products are typically getting a lot of different delivery vehicles, whether it's the, you know, the soda vendors, the chip vendors, dairy vendors. Is that something that would occur here with Lidl?
Yeah, we don't get a large volume of those individual vendors. As you just mentioned, most of our store product comes from our daily morning tractor trailer deliveries.
And let's just touch base on trash and recycling. That was handled by private waste hauler that's privately contracted by Lidl, is that correct?
Yes, we typically contract with, with the local waste hauler. Our engineer is going to elaborate a little bit more on our, our trash and recycling operation, but from a perspective of trash, we rarely, we rarely generate very limited refuse. Our waste hauler will typically do pickups one to two times a week. We endeavor to have them do garbage pickups on off-peak hours, again, to not disturb any customers or employees and also to avoid picking up trash at hours that are disruptive to our residential neighbors.
And I know we're going to hear a little bit more from your, your. And I know we're going to hear a little bit more from your, your engineer as well, but most of your recycling is actually baled, you know, back of house within the store and is actually put back onto the, onto the delivery trucks and carted offsite, correct?
Correct. We put most of it back to our distribution centers to recycle the whole process.
Okay, thank you. I have nothing further, Chairman.
Do any of our professionals have questions for this witness? Any members of the board?
Mr. Chairman, Mr. Mealy.
Go ahead, Mr. Mealy.
Sir, what would be your hours of operation?
We will be open from 8:00 AM to 10:00 PM, seven days a week.
And you are aware, if I'm not mistaken, that deliveries cannot begin before 6:00 AM?
Correct.
Thank you, thank you.
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Mandel, please go ahead.
You stated that you were in the area of like 50 new employees. Do you have any idea how many employees are currently employed by Food Town? And will you be offering those employees jobs in this new grocery store?
I do not specifically know how many employees there are in the current Food Town, but we definitely will be looking to hire most of those Food Town employees just to, to give them another, another chance.
And follow up on that, from the, this, a timeline from approval by us, of course, now you need building approval, but what's the timeline from when Food Town ceases to operate and Lidl starts to operate?
Sure, we expect to close on the property sometime early next summer. And then after that, it should be about 12 to 18 months until we, we open our store. So I would expect towards the, the later part of October of 2022 is our anticipated opening.
So the residents of that area will be without their local supermarket for a year, year and a half to two years?
I mean, I suppose, but it will be worth it for us to.
Okay.
Okay?
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Perwick?
Yes, thank you. What will the size of the store be compared to the existing Food Town store? It's about a 400 square foot difference, I can add. The, the existing store is 30,600 square feet and we're proposing 31,000.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Chairman, Mr. Mealy?
Mr. Mealy, go ahead.
It was mentioned that there would be no prepared foods as such. However, would there be a deli section, one that is currently quite popular at the present store?
Yeah, we are starting to implement some prepared foods into our store. They will not be, they will not be made here. They will be made at an offsite location, possibly one of our other locations nearby. We are having a more of a hub with terms of our deli meats and prepared.
They would be prepared elsewhere and brought in and, and available for, for sale? Is that it?
Correct.
Thank you.
A quick question for me. Will there be any kind of online shopping and picking services offered at your store?
Yeah, we're implementing a process for, for online shopping as we speak, so by the time the store opens, that'll, that'll definitely be available.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, Mr. Fergieri here. Yes, question regarding the parking lot. I've, I've been there during storms when that lot took on some water, to say the least. I don't know. I, I was reviewing the application. Are we just going to maintain the lot as is? Will there be upgrades to it to get it more in line with, with new parking lots that have more drainage and green islands and things of that sort? And if the information is here, that's great, but I was unable to locate it.
Yeah, Mr. Ferg, if you could just hold that thought for our next, next witness. He's our civil engineer.
Okay.
Uh, we're going to go through that, but we are adding green. We are, you know, implementing various measures. This application will result in a reduction in the amount of impervious coverage of what exists out there today.
Okay, thank you.
Ben's next, Ben Crowder's next up.
All right.
Right. Any other members of the board with a question for Mr. Sandaland? Okay. Mr. Witschuska? I said that well enough.
You did. You did it well enough. John is fine, believe me.
All right. John, you can continue with your next witness.
Okay, great. Next witness is Ben Crowder and he is going to be offered as a professional engineer.
Chairman, I just want to, I just want to make sure. I guess we're going to reserve public questions for witnesses till, till the end?
That's correct.
Okay, great. Mr. Crowder, would you raise your right hand, please? You swear the testimony you're about to provide is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Would you state and spell your name for the record, please?
Is Ben Crowder. First name B.E.N., last name C.R.O.W.B.E.R.
And would you give the board the benefit of your qualifications and experience, please?
Yes, I'm an associate with the firm Bowler Engineering. We're headquartered in Warren, New Jersey in Somerset County. Bachelor's of Science degree in civil engineering from the University of Pittsburgh. Over 10 years of site civil design experience. I'm also a licensed professional engineer in the state of New Jersey, New York, and Pennsylvania. And I've had the opportunity of being the engineer of record for a majority of Lidl's New Jersey developments that are either built or going through a permitting entitlement period.
Does the board have any questions regarding the qualifications of this witness? All right. This witness is acceptable. Please continue.
Thank you, Chairman. Mr. Crowder, you and your office prepared the plans that are before the board this evening, is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay, I'm going to turn the floor over to you to provide an overview of existing conditions as well as the proposed plans. And I believe you have the ability to share screen with the various exhibits we're going to be discussing tonight. Is that correct?
Not yet. If I could request from the chairman or Mr. Hoffker, that'd be great. And I see it came through.
And, and, and Mr. Crowder, as you, as you present, I guess, you know, anything that is a, a new exhibit that wasn't otherwise submitted with the plans, we'll, we'll start marking probably with this one as Exhibit A1. And when we go, you go through them, if they're the same documents that are actually in the application package. Mr. Carlson, do we need to, should we mark everything along the way or just anything that is like a new color rendered exhibit?
If, if, if it's been previously submitted and substantially the same form, no need to mark it. Do mark it, do, or anything that's been rendered.
Okay. Thank you. Go ahead, Ben.
So what I can mark for the record as Exhibit A1, everyone can see a current aerial plan?
Yes, we can see your screen.
Okay. So for the record, A1 aerial exhibit prepared by my office with this evening's date of December 7th, 2020. For the board's reference, top of this exhibit would be the northerly orientation. Before I got into describing the proposed Lidl development, I wanted to just provide a quick overview of the subject site for the application. As you'll see on A1, the subject site is delineated with a thick yellow dashed line centered on the exhibit. Currently, as Attorney Witschuska had indicated, it's Block 483 Lot 1, just under three acres. The, the boundary survey indicates it's about 2.96 acres located within your B3 zone. Around the site, first starting to the north and working in a clockwise manner. Immediately to the northwest of the site is the existing Shell gasoline station. That's also within your commercial corridor that fronts on North Beverwick Road. As we work along the northern property line predominantly to the northeastern corner, there's various single-family residential homes as part of one of your residential zones. Before wrapping around to the eastern portion of the site, where you do have Volunteers Park with various sports and amenity fields. To the south of the site, the site does have frontage on a small street called Claudine Terrace that actually transitions into Crescent Drive as you continue working south from the site. And the site also immediately to the west has frontage along North Beverwick Road. And immediately beyond that is some additional commercial zoning, which is also known as Detroit Plaza, where you have various inline commercial uses. The site from an access perspective does have a full movement driveway located on Claudine Terrace. It's, it's effectively centered on the southern property line. And as it relates to access along North Beverwick Road, as many board members may know, extensively wide curb cuts there today. One serves as an ingress and egress driveway, more centered on the frontage. And then the northerly access point, which is also extremely wide curb cut, is designated as an entry-only driveway. And also one key element that you'll see continually carried over into our proposed design is Volunteers Park and the, the access road servicing that. So if you're on Crescent Drive, you can access Volunteers Park through at portions a one-way driveway that works in a counterclockwise network, meanders through a wooded area and it actually ties in at the very southeastern corner behind the existing Super Food Town. So in order to continue that one-way circulation servicing that park, you'll see how that was incorporated into our proposed site layout as a design consideration. If we look at the site itself, as Attorney Witschuska had indicated, currently occupied by a structure that's about 30,663 square feet, a majority of which is occupied by Super Food Town. But on the southern end of the overall building footprint is actually Bollywood Grill. It's an Indian restaurant, currently more on the southern appendage of that overall structure. Circulating within the site, certainly those that have been there, one-way drive aisles, angled parking from a circulation perspective, about 157 parking spaces. And what the area really also defines, which is important as part of our proposed application, is several existing non-conformities on the site relative to your B3 zoning criteria. And I want to briefly walk you through those. There's three of them relative to the underlying zoning. The existing building is required to have a 50-foot front yard setback. Relative to Claudine Terrace, Bollywood Grill is about 21.1 feet away. So less than 50% of the required setback from that road. Also as a residential buffer perspective, certainly with the resonance to both the north as well as immediately to the east and northeast of the site, a 20-foot residential buffer is required. Under existing conditions, that buffer gets in, in several locations to be zero feet or less than a couple feet along the majority of that northern property line. Impacted by an existing edge of pavement. And as you can see from the aerial image as part of A1, and I was just out to the site again today, tractor trailer storage along the northern property line certainly has been sitting there for, for quite some time. And the last thing that you can also see from a bird's eye perspective on this plan is the impervious coverage intensity on the site. As Attorney Witschuska had indicated, the B3 zone only permits 75% impervious coverage. Under existing conditions, 95.1%. So almost the entire site is either occupied by a sea of asphalt parking area or the Super Food Town building structure. So as we look at these existing conditions, a lot of the variances that we are requesting this evening are improved conditions. That being a reduction in pervious coverage, implementing a residential buffer to the northern property line or improving it from the zero feet that's there today. And also locating the building further away from the residential homes. Also in a very similar nature is where the building currently lies today relative to Claudine Terrace. So while it does comply to the side yard setback to the north to these residential properties, it's only about 39 feet away from that northern property line. You'll see in the plan that I present on my next exhibit, the proposed building is actually going to be over 131 feet away from that northern property line as part of our proposal. So increasing about 92 feet as far as pushing that building more towards Claudine Terrace and a public right-of-way. And as Attorney Witschuska had walked through, some of the submission waivers associated with the site, certainly it's almost entirely developed today with impervious coverage. No wetlands within proximity of the site that would have impact to the property. However, we do have an NJDP regulated water course that bisects the site. It's actually entirely underground, works from the southwest direction, heads north before turning and running east along the northern property line. It's an eight-foot wide concrete culvert that does handle a significant amount of drainage area offsite to the west across Beverwick Road as you get up to the Lake Hiawatha School, as well as the residential areas. And the DEP will regulate that underground culvert, even though it's entirely contained underground through the site before it ultimately gets to the Rockaway River east of Volunteers Park. So we do have to secure a flood hazard area permit, basically as a function of that being a regulated water course. But we have met with DEP, reviewed our proposed plan. They see it as a significant improvement to this site, a lot of which I had heard one of the board members at Mr. Sandalands and Mr. Witschuska is the added drainage improvements that we're making on this site, reduction in impervious coverage, all which have compounding benefits to the overall stormwater characteristics for the site. As I switch now and I can mark to Exhibit A2 for the record, I'm going to zoom in a little bit so the board can see this a little bit better on their computer monitors. What I'm going to mark for the record as Exhibit A2 is a plan titled Site Layout Plan Exhibit. It's also with this evening's date of December 7th, 2020. This is a colorized version of Sheet C301 that was included within our permit drawings. I've colorized it and I've also dropped in our proposed landscaping improvements to give you a, a bird's eye view of the proposed Lidl redevelopment for the site. So as you heard from Attorney Witschuska, the proposed Lidl building positioned mostly in the proposed condition along the southern and southeastern corner of the site is about 31,042 square feet. So roughly a few hundred square feet bigger than the footprint of the Super Food Town, but relatively comparable in size. The building is unique. For those that may or may not have been to Lidl in the United States or New Jersey, is the corner entry vestibule of the grocery store. It's unique on this particular orientation, northwestern side of the building as I'm hovering with my mouse cursor. It serves as the only customer entrance to the grocery store. So as a customer convenience, locating parking space is proximate to that entry point. We have a smaller parking field to the western portion of the building and then a slightly larger parking field immediately to the north of the site. We are requesting a variance as I briefly touched on under existing conditions relative to the front yard setback to Claudine Terrace, which is the frontage road to the south of the property. Similar to the position of the Super Food Town, 21.1 feet is the Super Food Town setback. We're proposing 21 feet for this building in a very similar location as the Super Food Town with respect to that right-of-way line. What you will see though is also conformance to the balance of the subject site relative to setback criteria respective to the residents to the north by shifting this building upwards of 131 feet away from the northern property line where it exists less than 40 feet today. And also under existing conditions, while that building is, you know, 39 feet away from those properties, a majority of the clockwise loading and truck delivery to the Super Food Town actually runs around the northern portion of that site in a clockwise manner before getting into the loading dock that's in the rear of that building. So we've moved the building south. I'll talk about loading operation shortly, but keep. but keeping that building away from the northern property line and those residential zones. What you'll see from the overall site, certainly from a colorized perspective, is the added green space. So as I mentioned, under existing conditions and you saw from the aerial, almost the entire site is impervious coverage with the graded asphalt pavement and old Super Food Town store. As part of this development application for Lidl, reducing the impervious down to eighty-eight point three percent. It doesn't eliminate or bring us into compliance with the seventy-five percent, but it significantly brings it down. We are requesting a variance that does equate to about eight thousand seven hundred square feet of new green space. Where did we put it? We focused on instituting a small residential buffer along the northern property line. We are still requesting a variance on that buffer width. We're taking it from about zero feet to a minimum of six point nine feet along the northern property line. But it does introduce some green space that will also be supplemented with a six-foot-high new board-on-board fence along that entire northern property line as some additional screening mechanism to the surrounding parking lot more toward the south of the site. Access, you can hear from our traffic engineer as one of the next witnesses in the batting order this evening. But to give you a brief executive summary, a full movement access, very similar to existing conditions, is proposed along Claudine Terrace as a secondary access point to the short side parking area and associated short side building facade. The expansive driveway openings and concrete curb widths that exist there today along Beverwick Road are all going to be reconsolidated into one better-defined access point that provides an ingress point as well as an egress with a left turn and right turn lane back to Beverwick. And the last aspect of existing access is the maintenance of Volunteers Park. So you can see just right off the right-hand side or eastern side of the property, the existing Volunteers Way, one-way drive aisle. We are looking to continue to allow that to intersect with Claudine Terrace, still provide that one-way access from that park through the site, but back to the associated public right-of-way. And I know within Mr. Canjiano's review letter, there was a discussion with regard to some additional signage. We're certainly in design coordination of that, but I agree with the comment. Certainly this is a one-way road implementation of some additional do not enter signage. And also coordinating this driveway with the adjacent driveway to the use immediately to the south is certainly what we'd be looking for upon some final design refinement. As it relates to overall parking.
Ben, just before we move off that, just because you touched on Mr. Canjiano's report, there's also a note about providing a cross-access easement and we're happy to do that, correct?
That's correct. Yes, thank you, John.
And also, there was also just a question regarding plowing and maintenance of the proposed driveway that we presumably just worked out relative to the details of a cross-access easement. Is that right?
Yeah, that's correct for that driveway.
Sorry, go ahead.
No problem. As it relates to overall parking for the subject site, your ordinance requires for a building of this size to have two hundred and seven parking spaces, which is one parking space for a hundred and fifty square feet. We are proposing a hundred and forty-six. If you do the math, that equates to roughly a parking ratio of four point seven per one thousand square feet. I can, you know, as engineer of record on certainly a majority of the Lidl sites in New Jersey that were either permitted or constructed and operable, a hundred and forty-six parking spaces is right in the sweet spot of where Lidl is looking to provide with regard to a parking stall count. Specifically also as it relates to that parking ratio of four point seven. And you'll certainly hear from our traffic engineer on the anticipated peak parking demand on the site, which you'll also see is supported by a hundred and forty-six parking spaces. With the grocery store use, we also are positioning two cart corrals within the shopping center parking lot or the grocery store parking lot. One is located in the small parking field to the west of the store. One cart corral is located in the main parking field to the north of the store. Those are not included in our parking space count for the site. You heard from Mr. Sandalands, those cart corrals and general policing of the site is done by a designated employee where a majority of the cart corrals are stored on the northern elevation of this building within a concrete vestibule area for general cart collection. And you will see that from some of the elevations and renderings from our project architect on that location. Also relative to access really quick, certainly we focus on access for cars. But one of the important other aspects of this site is pedestrian access. We had some preliminary feedback as part of a pre-application meeting with the town and your professionals. Certainly was a focal point in our design, including some additional sidewalk along Claudine Terrace as well as pedestrian crosswalks and ADA compliant ramps. And then specifically as it relates more toward North Beverwick Road, providing all-new sidewalk along that frontage, which is from my understanding, a larger corridor improvement along Beverwick Road that is a wider sidewalk, but also concentrated on a paver pattern, which you also see along some of the frontage properties immediately to the north of the site. So that's providing pedestrian connectivity along the associated site frontage. We're also providing a designated pedestrian route ADA compliant that gets you also to the entry of the store. Certainly this is important for those familiar with some of the New Jersey Transit bus stops in town. There actually is one bus stop located both sides of North Beverwick Road in each direction, but it is centered on the frontage. So it does allow accommodations for someone to take a bus and then walk to the site or walk to the grocery store with some of these new improvements without having to walk down a sea of asphalt and one-way drive aisles that you see there under existing conditions today. Relative to loading, you heard about some of the frequencies and times of delivery for the grocery store itself. But the site is serviced by a WB67 tractor-trailer. That's generally the delivery vehicle for the New Jersey stores that Lidl has operating. We are proposing the loading dock appendage on the eastern side of the building. It is a single bay loading appendage. We are requesting a variance for the quantity of loading spaces. Your ordinance requires us to have two loading spaces for a building of this size. However, based on current operational needs, certainly also supported by the low frequency of deliveries that Mr. Sandalands had indicated, one loading dock is sufficient for the store operations. And we did provide those WB67 truck turning templates as part of our site plan application for the vehicle's access to and from North Beverwick Road. As it relates to the loading space dimensions, we're also requesting a variance on the overall length of this loading space size. Your ordinance has a this is a design characteristic that the loading space length has to be two times the length of the largest vehicle using it. So for a WB67, this loading bay would need to be upwards of a hundred and forty-seven feet long. We are providing it, as you see with the concrete area and the dock area of just under a hundred and four feet. That is by far adequate from a length perspective to completely accommodate the overall length of a WB67 tractor-trailer that would be utilizing that dock for Lidl's operations. Trash, you heard a little bit of frequency and contracting with a local hauler from Mr. Wichescola as well as Mr. Sandalands. Very limited waste is generated by the grocery store, majority of which is focused on recyclables and in-house baler that compacts a lot of the cardboard and packaging materials of the product. That actually goes back on the WB67, back to the distribution centers part of a single distribution point model where you have a majority of their private label products coming from the distribution center, unloading the merchandise into the store and then putting the recyclables back on the truck, back to the distribution center. But for the limited refuse ways from maybe an employee break room that's back of house or the bakery area in the front of the building, there is a small ten cubic yard dumpster that is situated within the loading dock that is picked up and emptied by a contracted local hauler in that area. But very limited frequency certainly as a function of very limited internal waste that cannot be recycled and or put back on that 67 tractor-trailer.
And sufficient in size, Mr. Crowder?
That's correct. From a stormwater management perspective, we are considered a major development as it relates to NJDP and Township's Stormwater Management Regulations. Certainly as part of our application, we did prepare and submit a compliance stormwater management design on this property, a lot of which is supported by a reduction in impervious coverage. As I had indicated, it's about eight thousand seven hundred square feet. Reduction in pervious coverage certainly has the compounding benefits to overall stormwater control on the site. But if I, while I'm on the topic, just to further close the loop and answer some more clarification from a question I heard to Mr. Sandalands, certainly in reviewing the existing conditions of this site, there's very limited drainage infrastructure on this property. So you do have a lot of water just flowing over asphalt pavement areas. As a function of certainly reducing that intensity of asphalt area, we're also implementing several drainage structures and conveyance piping to better handle drainage and water that's impacting the subject site for certainly a significantly improved stormwater management system upon build-out of the Lidl Grocery Store. From a landscaping perspective, just to throw some numbers out there, we did prepare a fully compliant landscaping plan. A lot of it was centered on certainly adding green space to the site. Four hundred and twenty-three new plantings on this development. The focal points of our design, we're certainly creating some green space along the northern property line. And then a real big focus on green space along North Beverwick Road. As you recall, maybe from your viewing of Exhibit A1, it's almost entirely asphalt pavement from the street right-of-way all the way to the front of the existing Super Food Town. So really adding some green space, some new shade trees, street trees along the frontage, some landscaped islands that are landscaped within the main parking fields where a lot of the goals of just giving a little bit more visual aesthetic and curb appeal as you drive by the frontage of this site. Relative to lighting, we also did submit a fully compliant lighting plan. Those familiar with the current grocery store that's there today, very old, traditional, I would call them Cobra Streethead lights, non-traditional sources that certainly produce a lot of glare. The light poles do seemingly appear upwards of a twenty to twenty-five foot height range within the parking lot. As part of this proposal, all those old lights are being removed in favor of new state-of-the-art LED parking lot area lights as well as some various LED wall sconces along the facades of the building. I know there was a comment within the Board Planner's Review Letter of potentially lower height. We would like to keep them at twenty-five feet. And that does relate a little bit to some of the design intent that went into our layout of these lights. One thing that we look to do is to keep the poles more centralized within the parking lot. So as you'll see, you won't see any lights along the northern perimeter, sensitive to those residential areas. Certainly the source of our light being an LED source also orients light more downward versus the traditional sources that may have some uplight and/or glare affixed to them. And also as it relates to our photometrics and our lighting design analysis where we do not anticipate any light spillover to those residential properties to the northern property line as part of the proposed build-out. Certainly an improvement from some of the lights I've certainly observed being on the property and their more traditional light sources that are there today in age. Just to briefly talk on some of the grading for the site, I am very familiar with your steep slopes ordinance. We did prepare a steep slopes plan. The site is fully developed, as you know, from basically property line to property line. There are a few small areas of steep slopes based on the categories defined in your ordinance. However, your ordinance does allow for an exception of disturbing those areas when they're really small, just very isolated areas, less than a thousand square feet, which is the case for all areas on this project. Thereby, you know, a variance from those requirements was not anticipated for those categories. And then we're also here before you this evening for a major soil moving permit. We are anticipating bringing in approximately six thousand eight hundred cubic yards of soil onto this property as part of the proposed development. I know that major soil moving permit was reviewed by your township engineer, Mr. Justin Eliza. He did have comments within his letter, which a lot of which certainly were, he would be amendable to providing prior to land disturbance and construction that relate to having a contractor onboard and deliveries. And certainly can agree to all comments within that letter specific to some of the fees, setting up a pre-con meeting, the like from his review of that permit app. And the last thing I wanted to briefly talk about was signage. And that really covers, it will cover the variances that we need this evening, both from a freestanding and building-mounted sign perspective. While I do have A2 up here, I wanted to quickly show you the locations first and then I can briefly show you some details of those signs. And you'll certainly see a better illustration from our architect when you see some elevations and see those sign placements on those facades. But relative to freestanding sign, we are proposing one freestanding sign. It's located on the northern side of the now consolidated single access point to North Beverwick Road. That sign is set back about fifteen feet from the right-of-way. That does satisfy your ordinance. I'll show you a photo of that sign shortly. The building-mounted signs, we actually are permitted two signs for this building. We're proposing four. I'll show you the details. It kind of worked together as just two signs, but we treat them as four individual signs. Two signs on the western facade and two signs on the northern facade, both proximate to that corner entry vestibule, having the ability to certainly demarcate the entry point for customers at the Lidl Grocery Store. And what I'll bring up, Mr. Chairman, I can mark it if necessary, but this is an exact copy of a plan sheet that was provided within our permit drawing set.
Yeah, I don't think we need to mark it, Ben, but you may want to just blow up on it because it's a little.
Yep.
Thank you.
So what I'll first describe is, and I'll pan over here, Detail 2 of Sheet 903 is what I'm on, is the associated Lidl freestanding sign. We were requesting a variance for this sign to be twenty feet in height, whereas fifteen feet is permitted. Certainly we had gotten some feedback from your board planner and certainly a review of even the existing Super Food Town site there that's on the site today. In working with Lidl, we are going to reduce the sign height down to fifteen feet and be in compliance with your ordinance and thereby not needing a variance as originally proposed. We also are requesting a variance for the sign area of about ninety-six point three-three square feet, whereas only twenty-five feet was permitted. However, with the reduced sign height and the reduced sign intensity in working with Lidl, that new reduced height sign would only have about sixty square feet in total size. And that was in response to some of the comments from your board planners' review letters as far as that sign goes. We are still requesting though, there is a maximum sign width of six feet that is permitted. Even with reducing the sign down to what I've described for this application, it still is six foot four inches wide, de minimis above that six foot width. But I did want to put that on the record as still a required variance. And then just also reviewing the code a little bit, as the sign comes down, you also have a vertical sign clearance requirement, a minimum height of eight feet to that sign. With the reduced height down to fifteen feet, it would be five foot seven inches, thus a variance there. But certainly as I indicated on Exhibit A2, that sign is located within a fully landscaped area. There is no anticipated pedestrian traffic or anything walking under that sign, which is likely a part of the intent of that ordinance. which is likely a part of the intent of that ordinance section.
Any sightline issues, Ben?
Uh, no, none for the record. We have placed that with respect to certainly some of the ordinance setback criteria, but also keeping out of sightlines. And as you can see, the design of the sign is single pole oriented as to provide an open sightline immediately below that sign face. And the last specific detail does relate to, and I'm on Detail 1 of Sheet 903, is the facade sign details. And I won't go into too much detail on really their placement on the building. Our architect will have a nice elevation to show you those in context of where they're being mounted. But in, in summary, we are requesting a variance on the total quantity, four versus two. But as you can see, it is a Lidl logo complimented with illuminated channellet for food market, which is part of Lidl's branding initiative of being new to the United States. The average consumer may not know that it is a grocery store. So both these two signs that you see here would be both on the western elevation and the northern elevation of the site. Very similar to the freestanding sign, there is a minimum or a maximum vertical sign dimension of three feet. We are proposing, which is this Lidl square logo at 8.2 feet on the building versus a non-traditional sign that may be more horizontal in nature. The Lidl logo is square, as you can see from this detail. But the signs from that perspective are well below the permitted sign area. We're just asking for a variance on the quantity for each of those facades. And as your board planner did identify in the review letter, I think we do also need one additional variance for the additional signs. There's a small subsection sign of the original sign area, as you can see here, like to like relative to the western, to the northern elevation. So we would request that certainly as a continuity above that corner entry for the Lidl grocery store. And that, Mr. Wichescola, was, was most my, my direct on Lidl.
Okay, and, okay, and Mr. Canjiano had asked for some testimony regarding the proposed generator enclosure and suggestion maybe of some bollards and so forth. Can you just touch on that?
Yeah, we, our architect is going to bring up the floor plan. But just for the board's record, there is a small, and I'm back on A2, a small generator enclosure. It's actually open air above, but it is walled on all sides. There is a small access door on the eastern side of the building to that generator room, as suggested by Mr. Canjiano. Putting a bollard there, we can certainly be amendable to complying and providing that for that, that access point. But our, our architect will describe that space a little bit more relative to the balance of the building.
Okay, great. There was also a comment regarding the driveway, North Beverwick driveway entrance, and considering eliminating or moving one of the parking spaces there just to avoid any potential traffic queue. Can you speak to that?
Yeah, absolutely. We, we've looked at it and you will certainly hear some additional testimony from our traffic engineer. But I, I agree with the suggestion of Mr. Canjiano of, of eliminating one space. Please correct me if I'm wrong, but I do believe it's this first space along the main drive aisle that just allows, in the event there was some type of queue to get back onto North Beverwick, losing one space, so we'd be down 145 with this application in lieu of 146.
Okay. Would you be able to just relocate it anywhere else or not really?
Uh, we're, we're pretty much, we've looked at some of the feasibility. I think it's probably best to just lose the one space there. Still works from Lidl's perspective operationally. And certainly, Mr. Canjiano, from your review letter, I've reviewed all the balance of the comments and we can certainly agree to those. Mr. Wichescola just identified a couple for discussion.
And just to confirm, a minimum width of the sidewalk along the proposed building?
Along the proposed building is a minimum of five feet along this northern facade. It's actually a little bit wider, six to seven feet on the shorter side of the building in the ADA areas.
Good. And just speaking to, and I'll just touch on it, the, the balance of, of Mr. Canjiano's review letter, a, a good number of engineering comments, all of which are otherwise acceptable to the applicant. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Uh, one comment here was coordination with the fire official. Have you had an opportunity to speak with the fire official on the project?
Yes, I have. I, I actually, right before this hearing, had the opportunity, Mr. Fire Chief Steve Calontoni from Lake Hiawatha Fire Department did issue a review letter to the Secretary, Ms. Joel Lee, consisting of five comments. We did review those in great detail. And briefly to touch on them, we, we are going to accommodate each of the requests. But specifically, I wanted to hit on items two and three within that review letter as coordinated with Mr. Calontoni was providing a access halfway down the length of the loading dock area for his fire apparatus. So we can do a small shift of Lidl's pad-mounted transformer to provide a 10-foot-wide grass paver emergency access point for his truck. He had also inquired about the ability for trucks relative to the northern or long side of the building. Had originally suggested losing some parking space along the northern facade. But what we came to resolution on is, as you'll see on the northern facade of the building, there is one striped out space. Relocating this space to the center of the northern facade immediately in front of the FDC, which was Mr. Calontoni's major concern, just allowing his fire and emergency apparatus to provide, to have access to that fire department connection on the building, which he did deem as an acceptable solution along that, that main drive aisle. And then the balance of the comments, certainly Knox Box coordination, certainly we can be amendable to. And some of the other comments were just some clarifications for him. And I told him, certainly post-approval, if we, if we had a favorable approval from this board, that we would certainly continue to work with him through the closeout and compliance phase of this project to make sure that his apparatus and emergency response was, was adequately what he needed for this project.
And you've, we've also, you've had the opportunity to review the, the various reports from the water department, and all those comments are acceptable. Is that correct?
That's correct.
And same thing goes for Mr. Liz's November 17th report on the soil movement permit. I know a number of them are about fees and some other things that'll have to be provided. And, and those are all acceptable comments, correct?
That's correct.
And you've also reviewed the November 24th report of the Parks and Forestry Department, some suggestion on some additional evergreen plants, six cypress, six spruce on the southeast sides of the property. And that's acceptable as well, correct?
That's correct.
I think the last report we have is, is actually the planning report. It's got a number of comments, you know, comments obviously with respect to drinking water. We'll have to comply and satisfy the, the requirements, you know, understanding the scarce resources restraint order that's in effect. Is that correct? Can you just touch on that briefly?
Yeah, absolutely. So we, we had some initial coordination with John Wyarwaka at the Water Department back in July. What basically, this is coming down to certainly Principality has a scarce water order in effect relative to an increase of 1,500 gallons per day or more. Certainly, as you heard me in my testimony, these buildings are similar size. Certainly, the existing use also does have the Bollywood Grill, which is a restaurant. We had obtained some Lidl building water usage data, and we're in the process of getting some additional water bills for the existing super food town to compare. Certainly, we've looked at this on numerous jobs. Really, as a function of the grocery store, you heard Mr. Sandaland say that there's very limited prepared foods, mostly isolated to a bakery and then just any employee facility. So the water demand of a Lidl grocery store is actually significantly less than, say, how the NJDP would establish it or a more traditional grocery store. What we, as identified in the board planner's review letter, we just need to work with Mr. Wyarwaka to really put together an engineering summary to show that the water demand is, is at presumably less than existing conditions for the, the Lidl grocery store.
Okay, thank you. Comment two is building elevations. We'll, we'll defer to the architect on that. But item three, landscaping, the board planner had recommended, again, some additional evergreen trees along the homes, you know, facing on clodding terrace, some shrubs and some various other plantings. All of those comments are acceptable. We would work with the board planner to, to supplement the landscaping plan accordingly. Is that right?
Yeah, that's correct.
And we'll also comply with comment four, which speaks about coordination of our work, et cetera, relative to the sidewalk on North Beverwick Road?
Uh, correct.
And I know you already touched on lighting and you touched on the signs. And we already spoke about the, the cross-access easement, which is item eight on, on that drive, drive from Volunteer Park. And I, I think that concludes all the reports.
Yeah, Mr. Wichescola, one, one quick thing just for the record on easements, just for the board's information, there is an existing drainage easement. The residential street of Nakomas Avenue, there actually is an existing drainage easement into the site. As part of this redevelopment, we certainly will be maintaining that drainage easement that's there in place, which handles some of that roadway drainage on that residential side street. So I just wanted to indicate that as well as the proposed cross-axis easement.
Okay. Thank you. I have nothing further, Chairman.
Sorry about that. I was on mute. Mr. Canjiano, did you have any further questions for the others?
Uh, just, just a couple. It was a nice complete testimony. Regarding the, the traffic and the stacking exiting onto North Beverwick, is the traffic engineer going to discuss that?
Yes.
Um, but he will, but you can ask the question of, of Mr. Crowder as well. And if he can't answer, we can defer to Jared.
Okay. Um, so it's the two things regarding traffic would be, it just for the board's clarity, it may be useful to show your, your truck turning template and your movements of the, you know, the delivery truck entering, exiting the site, how it gets into the loading dock and how it maneuvers in the parking lot. And then the other comment would be if you could talk a little bit about the stacking. It kind of comes from, and that was the purpose of our comment, to try and maximize that stacking length a little bit of removing or relocating that one, that one parking stall. Is to kind of maximize that stacking area as you exit onto North Beverwick. It looks like you have stacking for maybe one or two vehicles in the left-hand turn lane before the right-hand turn lane gets blocked. And you, you know, you're kind of backed up and not, if you're waiting for left turn, out at that location. So if you could talk a little bit about how the functionality of that primary exit's going to work?
Yeah, I'll leave the, the, the second part or your second question on the queuing to our traffic engineer who did the traffic impact analysis. But to quickly touch on, and I can pull up, I don't believe I need to mark this. I will just briefly discuss the WB67 truck circulation plan for the board. And this was submitted with our site plan application. What you can see on this plan, and I am on Sheet C906, is access from Beverwick in a northbound direction. The site traverses in along the main northern drive aisle before reversing into the single bay loading appendage. And then you probably saw on the colorized plan, there is some striped out area within the main parking field, and that's to accommodate the egress maneuver of the associated truck back to Beverwick in either direction, presumably to the south, but also to the north from a curb line design. And, and certainly the, the truck circulation is, is also a function of, of the deliveries, which are intended to be before the store opens, when the parking lot is not being utilized. And generally, that truck from Lidl's operational testimony does leave before the store is, is open. So worth consideration relative to, you know, parking spaces and, and circulation internal to the site.
And again, it would be similar for other deliveries and a trash pickup truck. Again, same, same general circulation. Is that correct?
Yeah, that's correct. And, and for the record, those additional delivery vehicles, if it happens to be, you know, the one-off free-to-lay truck or something that's not of Lidl's private label for the limited percentage that's in the store, that's coordinated and still utilized by the, the loading dock by the store manager.
Okay. So you're going to defer the question on the stacking to the, to the traffic engineer? And then also, since you are asking for a variance and a reduction of, from the, the township parking requirements, I'll ask at that time too, for any kind of backup from trip generation, or not trip generation, but parking generation, any kind of standards that this would comply with or, or other documentation that you can, you know, to try and support the request for the reduction in parking?
Yes, correct. Our traffic engineer will be ready for that.
And I agree with the planner's comment to provide additional screening along the grassed area, pretty much behind the building and clodding terrace there, that was predominantly a parking area. And now it's, even though it's not any closer to the, the, the frontage or the, the property line, it is, the building is, is kind of, is more building there now than, than was in the past. And I think, uh, uh, screening, tree screening, evergreen screening and the like would really, you know, go a long way to try and buffer and, and screen that, that, that building mass that's, that's pretty close to the property line. So this, you know, when you resubmit, we'll be looking for some, you know, heavy, heavy plantings in that area. Stormwater, you had mentioned it would be regulated under the flood hazard area, stream, stream accroachment permit with the DEP. Can you give us, it looks like your storm drains, correct? The majority of them connect directly to the piped culvert within the, the town easement that runs through the property. Are there any water quality components associated with the current stormwater design?
We've, based on some of our initial discussions, we have met several times with the state to just discuss what was needed for that, that permit. And kind of the unique scenario here where you have a, a regulated stream that is underground through an eight-foot culvert. They did give us preliminary approval on those direct connections. Certainly, as a reduction in pervious, they said it would be subject to their, their stormwater review if they wanted to require any additional water quality. Certainly, you know, from a regulation perspective, we don't have to. But knowing that they are connecting immediately there, we may be looking at, you know, some water quality type units as part of that final approval with the flood hazard group.
Well, they give a very detailed review on stormwater. So I'll defer any kind of water quality treatment to the, the state review on that. And I agree, it's not required. You, you meet your requirement. But considering, so again, I would defer to them. But the consideration should be given for some kind of enhanced water quality as a good faith effort in, for some of those parked area, parking areas.
Okay.
Right. I don't have anything else. Thank you.
Okay. Ms. Vivate, anything for you?
Just a couple of things. I think most of it was touched on. The drinking water, obviously you'll coordinate with Water Department. I think they have some, some factual concerns, but I know you'll coordinate with them. We did have a question on the, there's a drainage area on the northeastern corner of the site at the very top. And I, I guess we were concerned based on the truck turning movements, if that is likely to be kind of disturbed by delivery trucks on a regular basis? And if that's sort of prudent to have allocation?
Yeah, so we, along the northern property line, we are. Yeah, so we along the northern property line, we are, there is some baller protection for when the the truck actually pulls forward to to reverse in that area. Certainly, the the truck maneuverability isn't anticipated to impact some of the easternmost parking spaces in that area. If you were looking for, you know, some other type of maybe treatment in that area that would be easier to maintain or conducive to maybe some slight truck overhang in that area, we could certainly provide that in that corner. At that space.
Yeah, I I think I'd like to see that. And Andrew probably could could give tell on that. Something that is going to achieve that function without running the risk of, you know, essentially being compromised.
Yes, no problem. We could work with board engineer on a solution in that corner.
Okay. The other thing I just wanted to make clear, there is an existing pedestrian access at this street end of Nakomas, and I I believe you'll be maintaining that. Is that correct?
That's correct. Yes.
Opening in that fence and it provides access to those residents.
That's correct. Yes, maintained.
And then the last comment is really just just almost more for information. But you touched on it. It was in our memo that there are plans, which I think are were long term and maybe are are less long term because the township has received some significant grant monies recently this week or last on North Beverwick. So there are going to be some changes that that may affect, you know, the location of the sidewalk. So I would ask that the planning board is going to approve this, that there be a condition that basically gives some flexibility to the township engineer to work with this applicant. The actual of that sidewalk may shift a little bit, but I think the the overall intent will be there. I think no problem to fit a sidewalk as well as all the landscaping. If anything, we may have more room with potential space for a landscaping strip between the sidewalk and the street, which would be really nice. So I I know you said you'd work with them. I just wanted to keep you up to date on that. And then the last comment is if you're going to lose that parking space that Mr. Canjiani Gianna recommended, I think you could probably fit another tree there, which would help to better define the end of that parking aisle and kind of just market a little bit better, as well as provide just more green within the parking lot.
Yes, we can put another shade tree in that area. I agree with the increase width now by another nine feet would support a tree.
That's all.
Okay. Any questions from other members of the board?
Mr. Chairman, Mr. Mealy.
Please go ahead, Mr. Mealy.
I have two questions. The signs, one on the store and one at the freestanding near Beverick. Are they lighted? That's one question.
Yes, they're all LED internally illuminated, both the freestanding sign as well as the building mounted signage.
And the other question is, there's presently a pharmacy in the super food town. Would there be one in the new store?
The current Lidl footprint doesn't have a pharmacy in it at this time.
Thank you.
No problem.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I have two questions. And the first is, why is the water demand less with the new building than than the existing building?
A couple of reasons. Currently, the operation of the Super Food Town with the operations that are internal to the use itself. And then part of that square footage of that building is actually the Bollywood Grill, which is a restaurant, certainly has a higher water demand as far as preparation of foods. And then the the second part is really the proposed building. And that relates to the internal operations of the Lidl Grocery Store. So significantly less water demand than say what an NJDP standard water usage rate would be. Predominantly based on the fact that there is very limited prepared foods and operations within the building beyond the bakery that you heard Mr. Sandelands describe. So that data certainly we've acquired some from opening and operating stores in New Jersey is something Mr. Wyatt Worker just asked that we memorialize over an annual year so that he could look at the change in use from the food town to now.
All right, thank you. And one more question. Did you say there was a clearance of about five feet between the ground level and the bottom of the freestanding sign?
Yes, it's it's approximately five foot, seven inches if we pursue that reduced sign height that I had described.
Is that enough? I mean, for a vehicle that may crash into it?
Yes. So what's what's key about, what's important about that is really related to the sign location. So I'm back on exhibit eight two. That sign is within a fully landscaped bed located just north of our access point. It's not in a location where someone would walk under it or a car would drive under it. It's fully isolated in a in a landscape space.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Crowder.
No problem.
Mr. Chairman?
Go ahead, Mr. Mandell.
Two questions. Number one, I see only six handicap spots. Is that? Is that enough?
Yes, based on the number of parking spaces we're providing on this site, we're six ADA parking spaces, two of which are van accessible. They're slightly wider, is compliant with the twenty ten ADA regulations.
Okay. And the second question, the board knows what I'm going to raise. See, everybody's laughing. You you're you are hyping your fact of all sorts of organic and whatnot. Parsippany is a environmentally friendly town. I don't see any EV charging spaces. Are they planned? Can we ask for them?
They're currently not planned as part of the East Coast model with Lidl. Certainly, if that's the request, we could maybe save that to the the latter end of the hearing, discuss with our client for this particular location.
I would like to make that request. I think it's becoming more and more important.
Okay. Any other board members with questions? I have a few myself. We you discussed the lighting plan and especially on the northern part of the property where you're coming in contact with the residential area. I think you mentioned that does come to zero. You'll be casting zero light on on the residential area. Could but could you go into further detail about the protection you're doing to ensure privacy and and, you know, not interrupting the residents in that area?
Yeah, absolutely. Specific to lighting or the site plan as a whole?
More about the lighting because I would also mention that the the parking spaces that are facing the residences. I think you mentioned the fence, but I want to just get clarification there.
Yeah, so specifically to the lighting, one one significant upgrade to this site is just the change in the type of light that's within the parking lot. As I indicated, the lights that are there today are your traditional roadway Cobra head type lights. Traditional light source project a lot of glare, a lot of uplight from those older sources. Now with the newer LED technology and particularly this LED lighting package that Lidl's been implementing pretty much consistently in New Jersey, it's a it's a fixture that's full cutoff. Orient's like down downward toward the parking surface has certainly a better uniformity for the spread of the light. And we also looked at the location of the lights. You could probably barely make them out, but we are proposing three lights within this double bay of parking. Those are the closest lights to these residential properties. And that's going to help what I have described is zero anticipated foot candles or light spill over at those residential property lines as part of this Lidl development proposal. The parking spaces that are head into these residential areas, we are increasing that buffer width from anywhere from zero to a couple of feet to almost seven feet minimum in those areas, adding some green space between that northern property line. And then supplementing with a new six foot high board on board fence along that entire northern property line.
Okay, thank you for that. Another question regarding your landscaping and your water drainage. Is any part of this landscaping plan going to be able to help absorb some of the drainage from your parking lot?
We haven't really looked at, say, water tolerant plant species. We're trying to, we were trying to, you know, add some add some curb appeal visual aesthetic along the frontage. One thing from a site characteristic perspective, generally, as as many board members know, under existing conditions, when you enter the site today, it generally grades back to the east toward the main building. Ultimately, the lowest point of the site is at the northeastern corner. Certainly looking to maintain those drainage patterns. We do have some some swales that we're incorporating. You can't see them on this exhibit, but this large area of green space is actually a drainage swale that's working in conjunction with Volunteers Park to kind of utilize the landscaping material as part of the drainage design and not just have it, you know, all run off across asphalt like it is there today.
Okay, thank you. That addresses that question. And I think all of my other questions have been addressed. So thank you.
No problem.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Mr. Dinsmore.
Yep. With regard to the lighting. Occasionally, we've had people give us plans that show no seepage of light onto adjoining properties. And yet, in the end, you can see the hotspot of the light from that adjoining property. Are the shields on these lights going to prevent the seepage or the the vision of the hotspot of the light from the adjoining properties?
Yeah, so what we look to do when we incorporate a parking lot lighting design is certainly the focal point is orienting that light and that light source downward toward the pavement surface. But as it relates to spacing of lights, what we've tried to do, and it's one of the added benefits of LED fixtures, is a uniform light distribution across the parking lot. So instead of a hot, hot, dark kind of design immediately below the lamp. The design intent and it's it's supported with the values on our lighting plan are generally consistent across that entire pavement surface through that parking facility.
No, what I'm what I'm referring to is to literally be able to see the bulb. You know, I can see with your attorney right now, I can see three bulbs. I see the bright spots of those bulbs.
I need to get a better background for these Zoom calls.
But my my whole point is that I've been at commercial properties where yeah, the amount of light coming at you isn't all that great. It's not casting shadows, but you can just see that hotspot. And that actually has to do not only with the the quality of living of the of the neighbors. But also, if you ever were involved with the Audubon Society and with birders, one of the things they want very much is to not have the hotspot, as they call it, of the light visible to the sky or to the neighbors. And that's that's just a point I'm just trying to make here.
No, I I understand that. I apologize. I misinterpreted your original question. So what they are doing with this particular LED fixture and LED ballast is each of those LEDs does have a housing around it that does orient that light downward. And then away from the fixture, you do have a cone of influence that certainly narrows the further you get away from that fixture. And that's what we were trying to accomplish by putting these fixtures more toward the center areas of the parking lot so that you that cone of influence or as you're kind of describing it, looking up and seeing, I have a light in my office right now, that that bright spot, that allows that to to be mitigated versus say a a light source that's, you know, five feet from the property line.
Okay, I I just wanted to make sure that you that was understood that we're trying to avoid having somebody looking out their window and seeing what looks like a flashlight coming at them or something.
Yeah, absolutely. Your your concerns understood.
Anything else, Mr. Dinsmore?
That covers it for now.
Okay. I think I heard Ms. Hernandez.
Yes. Thank you, Chairman. Mr. Mr. Crowder, Mr. Cagiano and Chairman Von Aiken did touch on this, but I just want to, I have a follow up. You're saying that on this side here, we're going to have the swell near on the side of where Better on Volunteers Park is. So you're going to be developing a bio swell there?
It's more, I didn't mean to interrupt you. It's more of a a grass lined swell in that area, but we're also incorporating a few small yard inlets, which will also collect that surface water, pipe it underground to that culvert in that area.
Would it be hard to do a bio swell there, something that will delay it because we're not that far from the rockaway and 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 I I appreciate the decrease in impervious surface, but it's so compacted, even these beautiful green spaces might not really give us the kind of delay we want in conveying that stormwater. Would it be hard to make it this a bio swell in this area, some low impact green infrastructure?
We it's definitely already designed as a as a swell from a grading perspective. We can look at how that's lined. Those yard inlets are really only there to in case there was a severe storm and we wanted to, you know, pick it up. But on your comment, you know, to your design storm, that was kind of the intent. We wanted it to kind of run across grass over the time of concentration and not have, you know, what you have there today, which is, you know, a sea of asphalt in the back of the site.
It's it's going to be tough, though, because it's it's so compacted that you're going to have to really work at that lawn area, I think. But okay, thank you for answering that. And if you're working on the Beverick side on the street, I mean, I I heard Ms. Vavate talking about working on the the curb line here. So I don't know if this is even an appropriate question. Were you thinking of doing any kind of curb bump outs or is that not your jurisdiction of this project?
We we're generally maintaining the road is, as you can tell on A two relatively wide in this area. I know Ms. Vavate had indicated some potential corridor improvements. Maybe this road curb line width actually gets reduced as part of some of the township's planning. So what that could do, if that curb line actually comes closer to the center line, would allow for even more landscaping improvements, streetscape. And that was something we would agree to work on, you know, depending on the timing of the project and the town's corridor redevelopment, working with your with the town engineer and Mr. Canjiano on kind of making sure our design fits within the what what the intent is for that road.
Thank you very much.
Another member of the board? Hi, Mr. Mealy. Go ahead.
With respect to the demolition of the current supermarket, I'm assuming we'll hear testimony about this. But will all debris be trucked south and not through the Lake Hiawatha neighborhood?
Yes, I I think by just nature of of the course of action, that would be something we could agree to for the transport of that.
Because Route forty six and Route eighty are to the south, but we don't want trucks going north to two eighty seven.
No, understood. I I think we just given proximity of those major highway networks, that would be the preferred course of travel anyways.
Thank you.
Any other questions for the board, for our civil engineer, Mr. Crowder?
My turn?
Yes, please. Go ahead, Mr. Di Piero. It's all yours.
Okay. Most of my questions have been answered. Additional evergreens on the south side of the the building, which is the, so the residents on Crescent Drive don't just stare at a blank wall, have some vegetation. That was answered. Pedestrian access from the north side, where you have that drainage from that street. That's still going to be pedestrian access. That's a good. One of the things you may not be aware of is once a year, the township has a a township festival. And North Bevick Road is blocked off for one day. And I know Food Town, the proprietor of Food Town would always get annoyed because And I know Foodtown, the proprietor at Foodtown would always get annoyed because he's losing some business for that day. But it also annoyed him that people were parking in his lot. You couldn't drive on North Beverick Road. So they would try to park in, in the Foodtown parking lot to walk to the festival, which starts just up past that gas station. So you might want to anticipate one day a year, North Beverick Road is going to be closed. And I tried to point out that I provided several times that when you, when you're chasing people away, those are your customers. You're chasing your customers away one day out of the year. You, you may not want to do that. You're going to have not much traffic in the building anyway that day. So don't get your customers mad. That's just food for thought for you guys. And by the way, John Wissakal, it took me a while to get that name pronounced.
I, I know it did. I know it did, Councilman. And it's good to see you. And I can tell you that, you know, we certainly are looking to be part of the community and would be supportive of the, the festival and won't look to run anybody out of our parking lots whenever, whenever that is held.
That's a good thing. And good to see you again.
Likewise.
Okay, last opportunity for board members. Mr. Witchescola, it's all yours.
I said, perfect.
All right.
I've been practicing. Thank you. Next witness is our traffic engineer, Jared Dinan.
Jared, are you here?
Yes, I am.
Okay, raise your right hand, please. And do you swear the testimony you're about to provide is the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Would you state and spell your name for the record, please?
Certainly. Jared Dinan. That's J E R R I D, Dinan, D I N N E N.
And would you give the board the benefit of your qualifications and experience, please?
Certainly. I graduated from Kansas State University in 2001 with a Bachelor's of Science in Civil Engineering. I am a licensed civil engineer in the state of New Jersey and Pennsylvania. I also hold a traffic certificate from the professional trap, sorry, professional transportation board. It is the PTOE. It stands for Professional Traffic Operations Engineering Certificate. It's a nationally recognized certification. I have testified before countless boards in the North Jersey, Central Jersey and Southern Jersey area. I have worked on it multiple leadles in the New Jersey area as well.
Do any members of the board have questions about this, uh, this witness's testimony or credentials? Okay, this witness is acceptable. Please continue.
Thank you, Chairman. Now, Mr. Dinan, your office prepared the traffic impact and parking study that was submitted in conjunction with this application. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay, if you could just provide the board with an overview of your findings regarding those topics. And I would ask you, as you go through as well, to be prepared to speak to sufficiency of parking and comparisons. And there's also still a question on the floor regarding that, that stacking on the exit maneuver. So touch base on that too before you finish up. Thank you.
Yes, not, not a problem at all. As Mr. Crowder previously testified, the existing land use is an approximately 24,000 square foot super food town, followed by us approximately 7,000 square foot restaurant. The existing site has two driveways on North Beverick Road, one kind of centrally located and one located more towards the north. The northern access is the inter-only driveway, as Mr. Crowder spoke about. And the central one is a full movement driveway that has dedicated left and right turn lanes striped in the open parking field. There is a third driveway on Claudine Terrace. It is a full movement driveway.
Wouldn't it be helpful if we put that Exhibit A2 back up just as you're speaking to these items?
Certainly. Yeah. Ben, are you able to?
You have to control. Do you have it already?
Thank you, Ben. Yeah, so continuing on, the proposed Lidl supermarket is 31,042 square feet. We will eliminate the right-in driveway to the north and reposition the full movement access driveway. Again, the driveway will maintain the dedicated left and right turn configuration. The access on Claudine Terrace will also be slightly relocated, a little closer to the intersection with North Beverick. And it will maintain the full movement configuration as is witnessed today. For this project, we did provide or did count the existing access points, both on North Beverick and on Claudine Terrace. In addition to the intersection of North Beverick and Claudine Terrace on Saturday, March 7th, 2020, and Wednesday, March 11th, 2020. Just to remind everyone, as I'm sure you've forgotten that we're under a COVID watch here currently. The New Jersey governor issued a stay-at-home order on March 21st, 2020. So the traffic counts that I just referenced were before the stay-at-home orders and were not too dissimilar from normal traffic operations. The existing site generates a substantial amount, a decent amount of traffic, I should say. Approximately 260 trips in the PM peak hour and 300 trips on a Saturday peak hour. And that's based on our traffic counts as I previously referenced in early March. The proposed development will not be too dissimilar from these total trips. We anticipate increasing the existing trips by 25 vehicles in the PM peak hour and approximately 60 vehicles on a Saturday. So the Institute of Transportation Engineers typically defines a significant project as one increasing site-generated trips over 100 vehicles. As I previously indicated, we will not be increasing the trips to this location with this proposed configuration. So it will be roughly a negligible increase in site-generated trips when, if the Lidl is approved. We did do a capacity analysis at the two-site driveways and the existing stop-controlled intersection of North Beverick and Claudine. The levels of service during the AM and PM will remain mostly similar to the no-build condition is being if the Foodtown were to remain versus if the Lidl were to be built instead. At the intersection of North Beverick and Claudine, the overall intersection operates as a level of service and the 2022 traffic condition. If the Lidl were to be built instead, it would still operate as a level of service A overall. The site driveway at North Beverick would operate also as a level of service A, but the delay out of the site driveway, as was asked earlier, would have some queuing. That queuing for the Saturday peak hour, which is the more significant of the travel patterns, has a queue of approximately six vehicles, which equates to somewhere between 120 to 150 feet, depending on the vehicle. This queue does only last for a short duration based on traffic simulation. As was indicated, would block a few stalls, but it would all be contained on-site. And again, as I just stated, would dissipate very quickly. Also, as was accurately depicted, the right turn dedicated area can store approximately two vehicles with the majority of the configuration being for the left turn lane. Based on our traffic analysis, we approximate a 50/50 distribution at this location. I'm sorry? Was there a question?
I don't think so. Please keep going.
Okay, great. So yeah, 150-foot length, very quick to dissipate. Moving on to the parking, as was previously testified by Mr. Crowder, the township ordinance does require 207. Based on the site plan change of removing the one parking stall, we are proposing 145 with 68A rent, 68A compliant parking spaces. We did compare this to the Institute of Transportation Engineers Parking Generation Manual. They'll study multiple sites across the United States of a similar land use. And in this case, we looked at grocery stores. According to the ITE, a site of this land use of this size would have a demand parking stall count of 142. So with 145 that we move forward with, we feel that this site is more than sufficient to accommodate the parking demand anticipated. So just to kind of conclude my testimony, the applicant is going to define the access along North Beverick. And that'll be a significant improvement to today's standards. Today, the parking lot is very open, doesn't have a lot of curb definition. By eliminating the one, eliminating one driveway and consolidating it to one full movement driveway, it better defines the site's access location. The township roads of North Beverick and Claudine will be maintained for vehicular flow. They will not experience a large degrade in capacity or delay based on the proposed site. The six vehicles, as I testified on a Saturday peak hour, can be accommodated within the facility without impacting the township roadways. And the proposed parking count of 145, while it does not meet the ordinance, does meet national standards of the ITE Parking Generation Manual of 142. That concludes my direct testimony. I think I got the questions that were asked previously. John, is there anything you want me to elaborate more on? You're muted, John.
Sorry about that. I hit the button. Nothing further, Jared. Thank you.
All right. Mr. Cagiano, any, any further questions for the witness?
No, no further questions, but thanks for the testimony on that. And again, my suggestion would be to rework, work with the applicant's engineer to increase that stacking area for a little bit more queuing in that area and the removal of the one space or relocation. So I, I would recommend that the application be approved for the 145, not, well, board to consider approving the 145 instead of the 146 spaces with the caveat that the applicant's engineer will coordinate and see if we can keep the 146 spaces on-site if that, if we can get that reconfigured to not lose the space, just relocate it. But if that's not feasible to the, the application, be amended for 145 spaces. That would be my suggestion. That's all I have.
Ms. Vavate?
Nothing more for me. Thanks.
Okay. Did I cut somebody off just a minute ago? Okay. Any members of the board have questions for our traffic witness?
I do.
Go ahead, sir. Mr. DiPiero, is that?
Yep, yep. Just some observations, if I may. I use this Foodtown all the time. And the, the way the Foodtown ingress and egress was laid out on North Beverick Road, it allowed for a lot more flexibility on how people were getting in and going out. When the, when the line of cars were trying to turn left onto south on North Beverick Road, there was always a line of cars or two lines of cars trying to get out. North Beverick Road is heavily congested. Many times, because they had that wide opening, I would go around, even though I wanted to make a left turn and go south on North Beverick Road, I would turn right. It was easier to turn right. I would turn right and then make a left turn into a parking lot across the street, go around that parking lot to come out again and, and go south because it was easier. You've consolidated now the egress from this. And I don't know if you're going to have enough queue for left turn, left turn since you've narrowed them down to one lane.
I, I understand your observation. Based on what we're seeing in the analysis, we are seeing six cars in total for both the left and the right turn lane anticipated during a Saturday. So I, I do know sometimes reality doesn't match, you know, calculations, but that is a valid observation and it's appreciated.
Mr. Chairman?
Oh, Mr. Mandel, please go ahead.
Yeah, following up on Councilman DiPiero's, I happen to shop there too. That turn heading south is basically impossible, especially on a Saturday. And just as a, as a suggestion and FYI, Lidl may want to employ a patrolman for those Saturday rush hours to allow traffic to move, the same as Kings has done in Morris Town.
Just so I can make sure I'm, I'm with you here. You're, you're speaking about North Beverick Road's southbound maneuver, turning left into the site?
No, turning left out of the site.
Out of the site, okay.
That is almost impossible on a Saturday.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. Any other questions from the board?
Chairman?
Yes, Ms. Hernandez.
Yeah, I'm wondering if that may be part of what they address in the revitalization of North Beverick. So because I know there's a problem with crossing also, so maybe in the future, maybe they'll even consider a light there. I might have been sure, but I agree, it's, it is difficult. It will be difficult coming out, making a left, people crossing. But it might be addressed later on. So I just wanted to add that when we're doing the revitalization of North Beverick with traffic control.
Okay.
Right?
I, I just had a question in regards to the number of the spots, because you cited that you're planning on having 200 trips or the current site has about 200 trips on a, on a peak weekday. And you're looking to increase that by about 25%. And then your weekend trips are 300 at peak. And you add about 60 to that. So they, I, I would, I guess I'm questioning, you know, for me, it takes me about an hour and a half to do my shop, but I have a large family of children that I have to feed. Potentially a number of people would, would require less time than that, but it still seems a little tight. How, how do you feel about the number of spots you have to handle, the number of trips you're anticipating?
Sure, that's a pretty common question, actually. So the, the peak hour trips of roughly 361 trips on a Saturday, it could occur like a trap, a car could be, that counts for entering and exiting. So you could roughly anticipate about 180 entering and 180 exiting within a peak hour. So it, it could be that some people are leaving at the beginning of the peak hour and some people are coming in at the end. So it, it all ends up balancing. And as you kind of said, some people will shop longer, some people will shop shorter. It just all kind of ends up balancing in this data-driven field of traffic engineering. So it, it's not an invalid concern. How that relates to the 145, again, it's just How that relates to the 145, again, it's just studies over the entire United States have been collected on, on land uses like this. And, and they oftentimes will kind of put you to the, the average or, or what is needed for a development like this. And, and that's kind of what we're, we're seeing in these numbers. So I still feel that the, the data that the Institute of Transportation Engineers provides in both parking and trip gen is accurate. And I think it's, is fair and just. So I, I still feel what we're presenting here today will be what's required of a site this size.
Okay. And it sounded like your point was each customer is really two trips.
It really is, yes. And again, that, that 360 is not entering only or exiting only. It's, it's the combination of them both.
Okay, thank you.
Sure.
Any other questions from the board members?
Mr. Chairman, Mr. Mealy?
Please, Mr. Mealy, go ahead.
I think Ms. Hernandez had a good idea. It may be a long-term solution, but a traffic light, which would include perhaps entry and exit to the strip wall on the west side at that spot, so that it would improve traffic flow immensely on that road. That might be something for Ms. Favati to consider, you know, long-term as an improvement to North Beverick. I think Mr. DiPiero mentioned it also as a very congested area.
Well, normally Mr. Teddy can probably explain it better, but you can't, normally you can't put a traffic light where there's no intersection.
Right.
So you would not get approval for that.
Yeah, especially since it's a county road. I think we, that would be difficult. If anything, maybe at Claudine, but I, you know, that, that requires, you know, a certain number of vehicles. It's really a question for Justin Lizza, but we can certainly raise that as part of the North Beverick Road improvements.
Now Claudine Terrace does have an emergency light because the ambulance comes out of there. You have the R and R rescue recovery and the precipitating ambulance squad back there. And when they come out, when they have an emergency, they're able to turn a light on, on Claudine and North Beverick for emergency vehicles only.
Yes, that's not within the scope of this current application, but I think it's something we should consider in the future. Something there to improve traffic flow. As you said, Mr. DiPiero, it is tragic on Saturdays especially.
A big time, but I don't think you'd get permission to put a light where there's no intersection.
I agree, I agree.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, Mr. Fergerry?
Mr. Jerry, please.
Yes, a question, not so much regarding getting in and out as the parking space question, our potential challenge. I understand the calculations have been made, but here in Precipity, we, we, we win some and we lose some with traffic studies over the years. Is, is there any, any reason why that striped area, which sounds like it's only going to be used from seven or eight in the morning on weekdays up until whenever they finish, when on weekends that striped area couldn't be multi-purpose? I don't, I'm not, I don't know the rules on that, but it seems to me that that's an available spot. I don't anticipate delivery trucks at 11 o'clock on a Saturday morning, but maybe I'm, you know, I'm, I'm not correct on that, but just throwing that out there. I don't know if anyone could speak to that.
I don't know. Ben, can you speak to that? Maybe put the screen back up again.
Can everyone see A2 again?
Yes.
Yep.
Yeah, so it, it's a good thought. We, we've done it on, on other applications. As I had indicated, that W, that area is, is really striped for that WB67 tractor trailer that comes before the stores open. And oftentimes a cross utilization of the space could be designated as an employee space. So then in the event that you might have, you know, periodic conflict, at least that, that's a vehicle that could be controlled. We, I, we did leave that stripe there. There is the, the off chance there could be a second delivery per day. It is usually one, but you know, that was part of the reason of just considering that to be striped for that space through the area.
Okay, thank you.
Any other members of the board? I, I just had one final question about the parking layout and that's of your pedestrian walking and, and pedestrians. So are there designated walkways across that main drive-through? I didn't see any on A2.
Let's go back to it, Ben. If I recall correctly, they, there was a sidewalk access that went from North Beverick to the site entrance. So it just would parallel the, the main drive aisle. To the best of my knowledge, the only pedestrian crossing was at the driveway access itself, a parallel, parallel to North Beverick. There was no mid-block, shall we say, pedestrian crossings that would be anticipated except for just through the parking field itself.
And that's where I'm, I'm, you know, looking for a little more clarity because what we've seen on some of our other grocery stores is that they'll put some sort of identified crossing area for, for their, for their patrons to pass through in a little bit more structured of a manner, either by using pavers or, or painted lines.
Yeah, I'll, I'll go back to A2. I, I should have talked about that a little bit more. So perimeter of the site, certainly you heard me talk a little bit about the pedestrian connectivity. Certainly at any site access point, we are providing an ADA compliant and pedestrian crosswalk with ADA facility ramps on both sides. Internal to the site, that pedestrian link from the North Beverick frontage designated crosswalk to the main entry of the building. And certainly the ability, it is a shopping cart operation. We are providing some designated striped areas through some of the parking spaces that generally align with pedestrian path of travel, just so you avoid having to go through cars. People are going to do what they want to do, but can we provide some additional provisions to allow you to, to sneak through with, with a, with a cart?
Okay. Yep, that's more or less what I was looking for. You'd be surprised how, how much those get used at, at some of our sites. So thank you. Okay. It looks like our board members have finished their questions. It is 10:30 though. Mr. Wixikala, we usually do adjourn at this time. It looks like we still have two witnesses to get through.
That is correct, Chairman.
And Chairman, I'll, I'll remind you, we have to hear an ordinance before we break for the evening tonight.
Okay. So it's my recommendation that we adjourn. And if you wouldn't mind being able to bring your witnesses back for a future date.
No, of course. Yeah, they're, and they're all subject to public questioning and so forth. So that, that's fine.
Yes. Okay. So with that, I believe we will ask to adjourn. We'll need another.
My next available date, my next available date is February 8th.
Do, are we going to allow the public to speak at all tonight?
Normally we would ask for, speak at, at the end. I'm, I would be willing to ask.
I think you have a huge crowd out there. I believe you have a huge crowd out there.
Doesn't look significant.
There are two hands raised.
Yeah.
Given the hour and then we're really going to go well past 11 already. I, I, I would think it prudent to, to perhaps say public questioning for, for our next hearing. That's your, it's, it's, it's up to you, Chairman.
Yeah, I, I tend to agree with you, Mr. Carlson, but I, I also tend to want to make sure that we give the public there an opportunity.
Absolutely, absolutely.
Would you want to do some questions only?
Yeah.
Yes, I, I think if we can limit it to questions of the existing
Witnesses.
Existing testimony, that would be appropriate. I appreciate that recommendation, Mr. Vinsmore. Okay, so why don't we handle that briefly? But after we establish the next date, that's, that way anybody who is listening will know when, when we'll be meeting again. Nora, when, when did you suggest?
February 8th. It's my next opening.
And why don't we save the motion to carry it until, until, until we're done with the public question?
Yes. All right. With that said, let's go ahead and open up the public question. I see six questions in front of me. I will start with Mr. Ira Kane regarding questions for the witnesses presented so far.
Am I, am I unmuted?
You are, sir.
You are, sir. Okay, thank you. I, I just want to say I'm, I'm very pleased with the professional manner that this board carries themselves and, and the very professional manner in which this application was presented. Just by, I'm going to be very brief. I'm the chairman of the zoning board. I've been on the zoning board for 31 years. I have a lot of experience, but in particular, I was, had my office on Beverick Road for 34 years. I was diagonally across the street from the shopping center. The question came up with regard to a sidewalk, I mean, I'm sorry, a crosswalk, which I think is very important across Beverick Road at this point. And I would ask that the, the planning board seriously consider rekindling the proposal for a traffic light at Claudine Terrace. There was a proposal a number of years ago to put a traffic light in there and Martin Heller, the owner of the strip wall across the street, would not grant access to his parking lot in order to make a better situation. You're not going to solve the traffic problem on Beverick Road. By narrowing the road, you need to, to create better traffic considerations, speed bumps and things like that. And I think it's very important that, that, that the planning reconsider this traffic, the traffic light at that intersection. That's what you need. Trust me, I spent 34 years there. I know Beverick Road like the back of my head. So it's not really a question, but I really wanted to get reinforced the, the comment that was made about a traffic light and crosswalk. Okay, thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Ira Kane. All right. I'm going to do my best with names here. Diana Arvidson?
There we go. Thank you. Thank you for letting me ask these questions. And I just wanted to say, the design looks beautiful, okay? But that said, I just wanted to clarify a few things. So I'm, I'm not going to try and say the first gentleman's name, Mr. Mr. John W.
That's acceptable.
There'd be 50 new jobs, but are they really new jobs or is it just replacing jobs that already exist?
You're on mute. John?
John?
He's still on mute. He's still on mute.
I swear I did not hit the button. I don't know what happened. I think I hit the space bar accidentally. No, I, that, that's actually a fair question. I, I guess we look at it as new jobs, but it would be displacing, you know, employees and, and hopefully we'd be able to take advantage of, of employees of the food town that, that may otherwise continue to, to want to work at this location for Lidl.
Okay. And the height of the building, is it the same as the, the current structure? And will the rooftop be used for anything? Because you alluded to the rooftop in your opening statements.
Yes, so I'm not sure. We're going to actually have our architect testify next. And actually it'll be February 8th and it's going to be a one-story structure. We do have rooftop mechanical units and part of our presentation will be, you know, some of them are placed in, in locations where they're not visible. Those that would be in locations that are visible due to the topography and the neighboring properties, we actually have screening plans for those as well. So rooftop units would be, you know, heating, air conditioning and we do have some vents for the bakery.
Yeah, okay. So you mentioned the bakery. I just want to make sure I was clear. There will be no deli with the slices, cold cuts and that type of stuff, right? It would all be packaged and brought into the store?
Yeah, you know what? I'm going to defer. Mr. Sandelands is still on and I see he's muted right now, but I'll ask Matt to just take that question.
Hi, yeah, the, there will be no, like, cutting of the meats in the actual store. It will be, it will be packaged from another location.
Okay, thank you. And then the, the hot topic seemed to be tonight is the traffic. As a, as a resident of Precipity my entire life and somebody who grew up on Crescent Drive and now currently lives in Hiawatha, I can tell you the traffic patterns over the years have gotten increasingly worse. Now, my concern is with that driveway entrance. I always said Crescent Drive, but I know it's another name. And is, so we're going to keep that, but that is going to be cars only, correct? And will it be going in and out and be able to make left-hand turns?
Yes, it will be cars only and full movement. So entering, exiting and, and only passenger cars. The delivery trucks will be coming in off North Beverick.
Okay. So for the board, I, I know at one point you were only allowed to make a right-hand turn out of that driveway to help alleviate traffic into, into that development. And also because of the ambulance being there, they wanted to limit the traffic because God forbid, I mean, there's been accidents there quite a bit over the years. And I was wondering if, if it's taken any, if anybody's looked at the impact of the increased anticipated traffic, what that will do as far as the ambulance squad? Because we don't want to get them hung up in any way, shape or form.
Just briefly, for Claudine Terrace Crescent Drive area, our traffic analysis showed we, we really didn't impact it a great deal out of that driveway. We're having, just looking at it like less than 30 vehicles coming out of that location just based on our anticipated trip distribution. So I wouldn't anticipate it having any impact to beyond normal conditions, the emergency service center along that route.
Okay. Now, the, the current configuration for the entrance and exit off of North Beverick Road had been changed and I, I think Councilman DePerro mentioned it and I think one other gentleman. As I said, living here for as long as I have, the traffic on North Beverick Road has gotten increasingly worse. And I know you checked on it Saturday. I would really recommend you looking at it on a weekday between five and six because trying to make a left out of that parking lot is nearly impossible. I can tell you, sometimes I will make a right and go into the parking lot across the street and do a loop-de-loop to try and, or I'll go out Crescent Drive to go up to the traffic light. It's that bad, guys.
You know, we did look at PM just to kind of close that loop, but the Saturday just happened to represent the worst-case scenario. So I spoke on that a little bit more, but we did study both the weekday PM volume and Saturday midday volumes.
I, I, I'm finding it hard to believe that Saturday is worse than that weekday because you got everybody coming in off of 46 going home to Montville. So, okay. Rooftop Claudine Terrace traffic. Okay, so are products for this store being sourced locally? And is it just groceries or because I've looked at your ads and they've had toys, clothing?
Yeah, we do source some products locally and as far as other products beyond grocery, there is there are sections that have a hodgepodge of items that are interchanged every so often with different stuff.
Okay. And the Food Town currently runs a senior citizen discount on Wednesdays. We have a large senior citizen population in this area that really takes advantage of that. Just want to put that out there for you guys from a marketing standpoint. Because I can tell you that parking lot is absolutely full on a Wednesday, especially in the morning hours. And I have other ones, but they're not as important. So I'll let other people speak.
Ms. Arvidson, you asked your questions very efficiently, so I didn't mind allowing you to ask so many questions, but I appreciate you giving the time to somebody else. So with that, Ada Raymond? Is there A T T A? Last name R E H M A N? Moving on, Trina Reed? Ms. Reed?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes, I can.
I just want to say first that when you say two businesses, it's actually three businesses that takes up that space. It's the Food Town, a pharmacy and the restaurant. My concern is this, that again, like Diane said, there's a tremendous amount of senior citizens who go to that store only because they have known they've shopped there for so long. They're known there by first names. They're people, you know, that the owners there know what they're looking for. They know what they want. So it's a little kind of place for them to go and seniors, I do know, have a tendency not to go to, you know, these big stores. Also, the pharmacy there, which is my pharmacy, I've been a customer of his for over ten years and I cannot tell you that the kind of stuff that this man does, when COVID hit us so badly and we had people who are afraid to come out of the house, he took it upon himself at nighttime to go and deliver orders, medications to the elderly, to the people who are afraid to come out. By you guys taking that away and putting in such a business as this, what's going to happen to to our senior citizens? What's going to happen to people like me who enjoy going to a small pharmacy that I am known by name and not just a number with these big pharmacies? And also, what will these people do once the, I guess, the property is purchased? And then the stores will no longer, I guess those stores will close. What will we do to get our medications? It would take, you know, over a long period of time for us to find medications, to go to other pharmacies, to do all that stuff. Has anybody thought of anything like that or, you know, just putting in another big store in Parsippany?
Well, Ms. Reed, I would like to say that that's not really a question that is something the applicant is able to answer as far as where some of those new customers go. I certainly appreciate your concerns there, but unfortunately, yeah.
Okay, so who, where do I go to address these concerns? Where do I go? Because quite honestly, it was very short notice that I feel that we received as a community about this and I feel like there's a lot of people who won't be able to, you know, have this kind of meeting. I mean, definitely our senior citizens, I can guarantee you that they cannot sign on to these meetings and stuff like that to, you know, ask questions and everything else. So what do we do and where do we, you know, talk about this stuff before we say yes to another big store in Parsippany?
Well, Ms. Reed, I believe they've already testified that the store is roughly the same size as the existing store. So we're not looking at a change in size and we're generally not looking at a change of use outside of what you pointed out is the loss of the pharmacy and the restaurant. And so, you know, for that reason, there's not a lot to be done about the use of the property because it is an accepted use and and the real, the only real changes are the potential variances in play. I think you brought up a good point about the two years potentially where this this use won't be accessible to the community, the construction though. And so that's certainly something that I think the board members ought to consider when making their decision.
Chairman, can I jump in for just a moment?
Please.
Let me just add. You know, I want the public to be very clear about this, that, you know, this board is not moving the Food Town out or away. I don't know the details, but my understanding and it certainly appears that Food Town is leaving. Which then raises the question, what will be there next? And, you know, it could be high-density housing. It could be a lot of things that are permitted there that the property owner could seek to do. And we have before us a supermarket which may not replace the Food Town in kind, but you know, it does seem preferable. I do sense that there's a strong sentiment in the community to keep a supermarket in that area. I'll just add that.
I'm just going to throw my own, oh, go.
No, I was just going to say that he had said that the Food Town had planned on leaving. To my knowledge, they were just as shocked as everybody else. They had no intentions of leaving. So I'm not sure.
Right, well, that's really between the landlord and the Food Town, but I don't know if there's a lease renewal. But, you know, plainly, this is not going to remain a Food Town. And that's well beyond the control of Parsippany government.
We're drifting into commentary at this point and we did want to keep this constrained to questions, especially due to the late hour that we're already.
John, can I interrupt you for a minute? John?
Mr. DiPiero, of course.
Wait, just for one minute. What is the approximate timeframe when Food Town will close? That'll give the residents some idea of how long they have before they lose their pharmacy and some of the services they get from Food Town. Is it six months? Is it nine months?
Mr. Witness Gall, do you know if any of your witnesses can speak to that?
Well, I think I can. I think Matt touched on it earlier and we'll obviously be coming back in February. I can probably provide a little bit more specifics on that, Mr. DiPiero. But, you know, I think what Matt had said, we have a, we are the contract purchasers of the property. It's a contract that is, you know, contingent on securing all necessary land use approvals and that would be from the board and the other outside agencies. We've got a number of things we need to still work through with your water department and the like. I think the expectation was, you know, giving the time to go through resolution, compliance, et cetera. If the project receives approval, is a closing date sometime summer, early summer, late spring, early summer? Matt, is that what you were expecting?
Yeah, that's correct.
So, you know. Ten, about ten months. Eight to ten months, possibly, yeah. Okay, so the residents have some idea of how long they have to go before they can find a Rite Aid or or some other pharmacy. There's one right across the street as a matter of fact.
I want to use that pharmacy. I'm sorry, I want to use that pharmacy. I use.
No, no, and Ms. Reed, that's going to be commentary that I'm going to have to cut you off from.
Here's my last question. For the next meeting is February 8th. Is there a way that you guys or what we can do to reach out to more of our senior community and have a way that we can have their voices heard?
I'll try to answer this. That's okay, Chairman. I really don't know how we would go about that. I mean, you know, the notice is publicly available on our website. The applicant did comply with the requirements that it be mailed to everyone within two hundred feet of the property as well as publish it. So it's, you know, it's the applicant that handles the notifications, which they do according to provisions of law and they've done that. The board's really not in a position to notice it anymore than already has been. And I'm sure the town, you know, put this on all the public forums, et cetera, notification of this meeting.
I understand that. It's just very difficult for senior citizens to have access to something like this. We all.
Understandable and we've heard a lot of comments. I know I work in different communities and it's it's a consistent issue throughout the state right now while we're getting through COVID.
So will we be able to express more commentaries at the next meeting?
Yes.
Let me just explain to everyone briefly how this is going to go. As there is now, after the witnesses, there'll be an opportunity for the public to question them. Then when all the testimony is done, the chairman will ask the public for comments. At that time, you can make any comments that you like.
Okay. I will get those ready.
All right.
Scott, this is Diana Arvidson again. Is there any way to provide the board comments or questions that we have ahead of time? That maybe you would be able to preemptively answer during the testimony and, you know, alleviate some of the commentary.
You know, oddly enough, the answer to that question is traditionally a hard no. But there was a very, very recent change in law as a result of COVID. And I'll have to take, I'll have to take a look at that. And what we can do is for our February agenda, if we're able to get written comments in advance, we can put a few sentences on the agenda as to how those can be submitted and that will be handled.
I think that would be great. I think the public would feel really good about that and it might help, you know, shorten some of the commentary timing.
Sure. I think I can speak for the chairman when I say that we will do everything we can to accommodate that.
Thank you.
One hundred percent. All right. Thank you, Ms. Arvidson and Ms. Reed. Roberto LaRaca? Roberto?
Stand by one second. Let me unmute. Hello.
Hello, Roberto.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay. I like that part of the board. Where do you get the information that the Food Town is closing up? Can you give me that answer, please?
That was not presented by any of the board members. Mr. Carlson, is that something that you spoke to?
I think you have the wrong information. The lady was right before. We had no idea that this was going on. Okay. I don't want to speak bad about any business because it's not my job. But what you're doing here is you're replacing a supermarket and the seniors specifically. When COVID hit us very hard, we were here for them. We took orders by hand so we can bring them to their homes because they can't use computers.
Ms. LaRaca, I need you to keep your comments for next time and focus on questions.
Okay, all right. The question is, where did you get the information? I never got an answer on that. Because you made a specific statement that the store was closing and no longer Food Town. Less I looked, I almost three years left on the lease.
That was not part of the testimony that was provided tonight. I think it was an individual making a comment.
Excuse me, you testified that the store is closing. You did that. Not me. I did. Someone in the board just said the store was closing no matter what. You want to read back? Remember, made that comment. I'm sorry.
I'm sorry. That was me, Scott Carlson, and that's not exactly what I'd said. I'd said it's fairly apparent to me that the the use is going to change here. It's, I mean, the property is going to change hands. It's getting, coming under new ownership.
And we, and Mr. Carlson, my client does have this property under contract to purchase. As I stated earlier.
You don't have a lease agreement with me or you didn't call up or anybody. I have no idea what you're doing with that. You're just going to throw me out or how is that done?
I think that's something you're going to have to take up privately with the landlord.
Yep, well, no, the landlord is not online tonight.
I believe that is a, that is a conversation that is between Lisi and the landlord.
I'm sorry?
That is a conversation between Alessi and the landlord, though. You know, that's not what we're here to discuss.
I'm sorry, but you know what you're doing. My employees think that we're going to be closing up in three, four to five months and they're going to quit. And where do I get employees now? Because of the statements that you guys are making? Tell me that, please. And when you talk about family, we are family in this town. Okay, we take care of everybody that needs help. Okay, when I hear a comment from, I don't want to mention names, but this is a family. And I don't, you know what? Business is business. I understand the landlord is going to sell the property. Fine. Doesn't want to deal with Food Town, it's fine. But you cannot be making statements online with everybody listening to that this store is closing because we want to close. We don't want to close. And at least we got at least closer three years ago. I can't lose all my employees because of what you just said, what everybody on this board said. It's crazy. Just think about it. Go back and read and see what you said. What you said is totally wrong. It's bull. Now I'm going to tell you something about the supermarket that may be coming here. They're a generic company. They do a really good job. They make a lot of money. They don't cut fresh meat. They don't have produce. I'm answering the question because you made these comments.
These are not questions.
Okay.
Yeah.
You want me to answer your question? Okay. Do you, where does your product come mostly from, the eighty-five percent? Where does it come from?
With regard to the application in front of us.
You guys testified that this eighty-five percent of your product is generic. Where does that come from?
I don't think that was the testimony, but I'll ask Mr. Sandelands to to clarify how Lidl's distribution, et cetera, works. And you need to unmute, Matt.
Sorry, can you repeat the question?
The question is, where do your products come from? You've got Lidl branded products.
Please ask your question respectfully for our witnesses.
I did, I'm sorry. If I wasn't respectful, but I asked the question out. Where does mostly your product come from? What country?
We have our Lidl branded products which come from a variety of countries, Germany, which is where headquarters is based and where our brand was formed and also a variety of US and local products.
Can you name some of the products that come from the United States? Besides produce, maybe?
I mean, I'm not directly on the sales team, so I cannot directly answer the percentage of our products.
You don't have to answer that. I think it's enough. And the other question is, you spoke before about not. you, you, uh, you spoke before about no.
Hello, Mr. LaRaca. I can't hear you anymore. Mr. LaRaca?
I'm sorry, but that's what testimony before. Somebody testified. So you better look at your, your meeting before you tell me that I'm not asking the right questions. You guys made these comments, and what really, really bothers me, I didn't care about anything else. You've gone online, online and telling people that I'm closing down or my, that we're closing down. And that's not true.
Mr. LaRaca, I, yeah, I sympathize with, with your comments, uh, but at this time we're taking questions. Um, I, I certainly agree that members speaking online are speaking under their own, um, opinions, though, and, uh, I, I would hope that they're.
Speak under their own opinion. You have to have facts, okay? But you can give every.
All right, Ms. Ms. LaRaca, Mr. LaRaca, Mr. LaRaca. Um, I'm trying to allow you to, to exit gracefully before I have to cut you off.
I am peaceful. The point is that you guys are making statements that you, that are not true.
All right.
And I'm asking my question. I have one more question. Okay?
No, Mr. LaRaca, you had your chance. I'm sorry.
Okay. Thank you. So on the eighth, we can question him again, right?
Yes, you can. All right, Mr. Meth, you're the last person I see with their hand raised for tonight, so, um, please ask your question. Um, we'll have you taken off of mute.
Uh, there we are.
So I can hear you.
Okay, thank you. Um, I have, um, I have one question, um, on the site plan, but it has 14 parts, so. Given the late, given the latest of the hour, I'll just focus on the things that might be worth talking about before next minute. Um, Mr. Hey, Mr. Crowder, is there anyone you can call up Exhibit A2, please?
Yes.
So, um, oh. I guess my first, my first question has to do with, um, the orientation of the parking lot to the entrance of the doors. One of the things that really bothers me about shop rate is that all the parking spaces, uh, like align against the doors, and all the pedestrians have to filter through the cars all over the place to get through. And there's a lot of movements of cars backing right around where everyone's coming out of the store. Just a question. Did you, did you examine any alternatives? Will you turn the parking 90 degrees? I know that it might be tough to keep the same number of spots. Just curious.
Okay, I'm not on mute. Yes, I mean, certainly as you, as you look at an ideal parking layout, your parking bays want to be par- or perpendicular to the way a pedestrian is coming out of the store in the ideal situation, but given layout, lot geometry, certainly maximizing the efficiency of, uh, concentrating spaces customer convenience wise to the front of that entry. That was certainly a focal point, but with also consideration to what I had addressed a little bit earlier, providing some opportunities for, uh, the ability to navigate through those long, uh, parallel parking double bays, you know, if you have a shopping cart use, uh, without having to, you know, go through, you know, between two parked cars.
Yeah, if you could, that I, that would be helpful. Um, I guess the next question, is the site triangle drawn right in front of the stop bar? It's hard to see. I zoomed in earlier.
Uh, yes, it is.
Because like normally the viewing position, wouldn't that be eight feet back from the stop bar? Where the car is intended to stop?
Yeah, we, we generally, we extrude also the, we, so we check a lot of scenarios, the position of the stop bar, but also the extruded curb line. So you would stop at the, at the stop bar, but you would inch forward with your vehicle. So we're generally taking about a four and a half foot offset from the curb line for the purposes of that site triangle.
Um, is there any way you could show what it is, just to show that, make sure that nothing you, you put on the site interferes with it? And one other thing I'm particularly interested in or, or wouldn't mind if you could lay out, given that you are asking for a variance for the bottom of the sign, I, I believe you testified to 5.7, 5 feet, 7 inches.
Correct.
Could you, um, do some calculations to verify that when the truck leaves, that it doesn't lose visibility of the sidewalk? Because, um, truck viewing eye height is usually seven and a, 7.6 feet above pavement. And I'm just concerned about truck not being able to see a jogger or somebody walking down the street. So. I mean, it seems like you have lots of room to move the sign if you need to, from what I can see.
Yeah, yeah, no problem. We, we've checked the site triangle heights, depicted them on the plan, certainly with a, a focal point of the pedestrian crosswalk position of the stop bar and engineering controls, make sure that those checks are in place. And then certainly the location of that sign 15 foot back from this, from the right of way line was to provide that clear line of sight, you know, both for a truck vehicle and/or a passenger car at that intersection.
Okay. The only two, the only two other things I'm going to ask you. Number one, if anything you can do, I know you're going to rework the queuing and stacking, but I could tell you that, um, if, if two left turning vehicles block traffic from being able to make a right, this site is going to adjust frequently. Um, and, uh, I, I would suggest opening up that right turn as, as soon as you can. Um, and the only other thing is, if you could, I, I, if, if there's any way to provide pedestrian access to the park, that would be very useful because that park connects to a whole lot of neighborhoods, which means people have the option to walk instead of driving, which may help with your need for a parking variance. That's all I have for this, for tonight. Thank you.
Oh, I appreciate your, your questions tonight. Uh, very, very helpful and very informative. I, I'm sure you've inspired some questions from the board members also. I appreciate it. Um, and, as did questions from other residents. So, thank you very much. Um, um, at this point, we've identified a date of February 8th, um, uh, to adjourn to, and I'll accept the motion for adjournment.
It's actually a motion. Is that, hold on.
A motion? I'm sorry.
It's actually a motion to carry the application to February 8th without further notice to the public. So let me say, let me just say to the public, you will not receive another notice by mail of this date. So the, write it down. It's February 8th, 7:30.
And, and Mr. Carlson, might I just ask, and maybe it's a question for Nora, uh, for the members of the public, they logged on to a, uh, specific WebEx uh, invite for tonight. Will that change? So will the public have to go to the, uh, town website, or will it be the same?
It will change. A new link will go out.
Okay, so that gets posted on the town website, and just for the members of the public, uh, when would they, when would that be available to them, uh, so that they would see it?
Uh, as soon as tomorrow. I have to ask, I have to take care of it, so.
Okay, yeah, I just, that's, that's fine. I just wanted to make that clear in this era of COVID and these virtual meetings, uh, I just wanted to make sure everyone was aware of it.
Sure. And let me also add, uh, the night of the meeting for, um, the applicants, the board members, uh, the professionals, there will be a new link as well.
Thank you.
And, and John, I assume that you consent to extending time?
Yes.
February 8th date. Okay.
Yes.
Hi, this is Diana Orvitzin again. Can I add?
Uh, no, no, we're, we're not. To be a public at this time.
Okay.
I'm sorry, Diana.
Mr. DePero would, would have a council meeting for us, for the town people. I'll, I'll contact him separately.
I, thank you, Ms. Orvitzin. Okay. Um, I'll accept the motion to carry this meeting to February 8th at this time.
So moved Inzmore.
Second Mandell.
Very good. Uh, Nora, the role, please.
Mr. Perewick?
He has left for home, sorry.
Okay. Uh, Councilman D. Piero?
Yes.
Mr. Dinsmore?
Yes.
Mr. Fergieri?
Yes.
Ms. Hernandez?
Yes.
Mr. Mendell?
Yes.
Mr. Mealy?
Yes.
Chairman Von Aken?
Yes.
Okay, thank you very much, everybody. Have a great holiday season, and we'll see you in February.
See you then.
Thank you. See you then.
Were we going to have a hearing for, um, the ordinance that the Township Council referred to the county board?
Yes, that's correct.
Wasn't that supposed to be tonight?
Yes, that's what we're planning on doing right now, if you've got the teeth for it. Okay, uh, so we have before us a, uh, and a request for, um, consistency with our master plan on ordinance number 2020. I'm looking for the rest of this.
Hash mark, hash mark.
Yes. Okay, um, Scott, could you walk me through our, 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 um, our obligation here because, uh, I am unclear. It's been a little while.
All right, all right. Let me explain what's going on here. This is a, a revisit of the District of, uh, District of 1515, some of you know, as the Stanbury Project. Um, that they, there was a redevelopment, uh, plan put in place and redevelopment ordinance for the property. Um, since then, COVID happened. It seems that, uh, perhaps market con- conditions, um, or something related to COVID has um, changed the developer's, uh, project. So the Town Council had to re-adopt an or, had to adopt a new ordinance, uh, redevelopment ordinance for the property. That's now here before us on, on master plan consistency, and I'll just remind the board. I know we've all been through it, but what we're looking for here is, um, a vote yes or no as to whether or not what is proposed is consistent with the master plan. And with that, Mr. Chairman, I would recommend you let Susan Favate fill the thin.
All right. I will go with that recommendation. Please, Ms. Favate.
Thank you, Scott, and I'll try to be brief because of the hour, and I know that, um, there are representatives from District 1515 here who, uh, have been waiting a very long time. Um, I don't think they plan on speaking, but they're here in case, I, I guess in case there are questions. Uh, just to reiterate a little bit what Scott was saying is, um, this has been, um, an ongoing, uh, long time application and, and project, which I think many of you remember. Um, it really dates back at least five, six years. Um, the Township Council did determine that this was an area in need of redevelopment in 2015. Uh, redevelopment plan was prepared. The Planning Board adopted that, um, and has subsequently amended that plan, or the Township Council has amended that plan twice. And you have found those amendments to be consistent with the master plan twice. So that brought us to early this year, um, the applicant did submit a site plan application. It was declared complete in February. Everything was ready to go in March, and then COVID happened. Uh, so that has really, I think, is probably not a surprise to most folks. Um, it has really transformed the retail and office environment. Um, it is a completely different place than it is, than it was, you know, eight or nine months ago. So as a result, um, the applicant is asking to change the project. They're asking the Township Council to adopt amendments. Um, essentially to reduce the, um, the retail and office square, square footage, eliminate the office altogether, and then reduce the, the retail component from 100,000 square feet to 60,000 square feet of the total project. And then on the flip side, that would be increasing the residential component of the project. Um, and this is something that the Township Council has been, has been talking to them about, and then even before that, the Township Professionals were talking about. Um, and one way to mitigate, you know, some concerns about additional residential units was that the majority of those additional, additional units will be age restricted. Um, so really, it's a total of, uh, 57 additional units that they're asking for as part of the redevelopment plan. All but eight of those would be age restricted, so 55 plus. Um, eight of them have to be non-age restricted because those are the affordable units. Um, and Township already maxed out their affordable age restricted units. So we really, you know, we can't be asking for additional affordable age restricted units because, you know, we've already, we've already capped, basically. So, uh, where that's being proposed, if you remember what this project looked like, um, there were two, you know, mixed-use buildings with ground floor retail and residential above. Um, there were two retail slash restaurant only buildings, one story, which would be along Route 10. And proposing is that those two one-story buildings become more like one building, um, and it'd be three stories. Um, so two stories of residential, which would be age restricted units over ground floor retail. Um, and then the eight units of affordable units go elsewhere in the project. So it's become a slightly less mixed use in terms of there's a, there's a heavier residential, uh, component, but it is still a mixed use project in the sense that there's still 60,000 square feet of retail slash restaurant. Um, and then there are, there's the residential component, and there's still a central public open space. They've asked for some adjustments to that to make things work. Um, it largely serves the same function. It's similarly, uh, you know, done in size. So, um, our sense was that it was, um, you know, really not that different, slightly reconfigured. Um, so I think without going into a ton of details, the other, other piece that changes a little bit is the phasing. Um, again, because of the market conditions where retail and office, anything that's basically not residential right now is, is very tough to be financing for to get off the ground. So they're asking if the all residential building basically go first, which is a little bit flipped from how it was. So that would, uh, under the amendments be going first in phase one. Phase two would be the, um, the mixed use building that sort of fronts that open space area as well as the two, the buildings along Route 10 that would have age restricted units above them. So it's kind of reversed the phasing. The infrastructure improvements, which you may recall, there was, there was some, um, you know, to the driveway interchange and a number of other infrastructure improvements. Those are still all in place, uh, and the timing for those would be, um, comparable to what was previously, you know, approved as part of the redevelopment. So, um, you know, we, we, we put out a memo, which, um, because it's 11:20, I don't want to go through every item, but there were about, uh, 10 items, which really summarize, um, the requested changes to the redevelopment plan. Um, most of those were to, to facilitate the, you know, the slightly changed, um, development. A couple of them were actually just cleanup items that because we're in there and making changes, it's an opportunity to kind of fix a couple of things. Like, for example, removing hotels as a permitted use here. There are no hotels envisioned. There is a hotel. It would be on the Hannover side. Um, that's not under this, this board's jurisdiction. Um, you know, removing drive-throughs as a permitted use. I don't think anybody really wants to see that here. So things like that, um, we're taking the opportunity to fix. Um, so I'm happy to answer questions if there are questions on the specific changes, but I think what's, to echo Scott's, um, you know, guidance to is really about consistency with the master plan, and, and we've gone through the applicable goals, um, from the recently adopted 2020 plan. Um, which maybe I'll, I'll take a pause. I keep talking about the master plan goals and ask if there are any questions. Everybody wants to go home? Or, or, or get off the computer?
Su- Susan, unfortunately, I'm not looking to get off very quickly, uh, I'm sorry to say, because I, uh, I have serious concerns about this. Um, uh, first off, I guess, is, uh, will there be a new site plan required?
Yes. Um, but whether it's a completely new site plan or an amendment, you know, that it's nomenclature, but they will be coming to you, uh, with, you know, all new plans.
All right. That certainly makes things a little bit better. I appreciate the, uh, consideration of, of the council and addressing the, uh, the age, um, the age restricted housing, but it's still additional people. There are going to be additional traffic and, you know, goal four of, of our, of our strategy is to mitigate traffic, um, where, where possible as well. I mean, numerous areas where we're adding residents and, and taking away from potential retail. I, I wouldn't agree with the developer that our current, um, our current situation with COVID is a permanent one. Um, and, and I feel like they're probably putting the cart before the, in order to get a change for a project which in a year's time or two years' time may be deemed to not be necessary.
I, I, I hear your concerns, Chairman, and I, and I can say that they've been shared by others. Um, but I will say that, you know, not being a real estate finance expert, um, the window for when a lot of these things have to be decided is, is not a year, a year and a half, or two years out. It's now. Um, and so in terms of getting the actual financing from the bank, it, it's the present tense that matters for them. Um, and so I think that's what they're facing. Now, it's, say that, um, if market conditions improve and the picture is completely different in a year, then they might not be able to come back and ask for some additional tweaks. They're, they're free to do that.
Susan, can I, can I point out something here?
Yes.
Affordable housing is part of the issue. Uh, and, and we have an agreement with the courts. The.
Um, the affordable housing units in this development um are part of our, the township's obligation to the courts.
Yeah.
So if we were to deny this for some reason, then we have to find some place in Parsippany other than here to build four hundred apartments to still meet our affordable housing obligation. Um, and uh, John, I don't think you want to pick out a spot in Parsippany next to your neighborhood or anybody else's. This one is not impacting on any residential area in town. And it will have access from Dryden Way. And we have to keep track that this is also affordable housing that the township has to meet this commitment.
Yeah, thank you, Councilman. That's an excellent point. John, I think you're, you're muted.
Thank you. I I I appreciate that point. I I did consider it, and I guess the area where I I had a question was um because this such, this plan has already been approved as it is, what is our obligation to change in terms of uh still meeting the requirements of of the affordable housing? As we've approved the plan, it's not, it's not Parsippany that's looking to change. It's, it's the developer.
I think the short answer, go ahead, Councilman, go ahead.
Um, since COVID hit, and you see a lot of restaurants and stores closing or hanging on by their fingernails at this point in time, all of the stores, retail, that had committed direct expense in in this development backed away because of the pandemic and what the future holds in a year or two. They no longer have the financial backing they had before. So if 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 we don't, if they don't find some other way to fund, and they have, build the apartments first, the apartments to phase one, okay? And the retail to phase two, they have more time to find lessies uh for the retail, but they can still move forward with the project in the apartments first and get financial backing for that. That also gives them the money they need to build the access from Dryden Way.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, and I'll just also note that the, the first phase in that, that first building that they're looking to build, which previously wasn't, was mixed use building and now uh would be all residential. It's actually ten fewer units and it's a one story less than originally contemplated. So at least in phase one, the impact is less. Um, then phase two brings on the remaining residential units, including the additional mostly age restricted units as well as the retail. So um, I think, I think the Councilman made an excellent point about, um, you know, really the timing. It it buys them a little bit of time. And I think, John, to your point about this isn't something that the township changed, you know, what responsibility do we have? Um, I, you know, it's a very unique situation with COVID, uh, and it has changed significantly. And I'm not sure how a court would view it. I'm not sure I want to take that risk. Um, whether it it would be viewed as the, if the township says no, have you met your obligation because you said yes before? I I I would not suggest uh pushing that envelope. Cause I I've just, I don't have high expectations that the court would look favorably on it. Are there any, any other questions about um the requested changes to the redevelopment plan? And then I I could go through the uh master plan goals.
Susan, I was having trouble unmuting. I just wanted to tack on to that. First of all, brilliant legal analysis. Thank you for that. Um, secondly, uh, let me just add that we do have a continuing obligation to cooperate um with the developer um in a reasonable manner to accomplish the goals of the settlement.
Mm-hmm.
Scott, I think those are the uh key words. Reasonably cooperate. Sad to say.
Am I not reasonable? Can I not be reasonable?
John, I agree with you. I don't want to see that traffic, but.
No, it's important to ask the the questions and and uh, you know, I I think that I'm I'm not by myself when we've looked at um at how some of these uh development zones were or overlay zones were done uh previously and look back at them with some concern when we see what goes in uh following up. So um, I I want to make sure we do our due diligence to ask the questions and knowing that the site plan is going to be uh, you know, also brought before this board is reassuring. But, you know, with these overlay zones, we've seen that we don't have a lot of to say after the fact, once these are done. And that's where my concerns lie.
And the, the, the other important point I think to recognize is that, I know I'm no traffic engineer, but I know enough to be dangerous. And any traffic engineer will tell us that the commercial space would be a larger uh driver of traffic than would residential units, where which residential units usually have morning out and evening in, and that's it.
But it, but Mr. Carlson, that, that is exactly when the traffic problem occurs.
Sure, sure.
Okay, so I've said what I've had to say, and I'm sure the board members uh, you know, have been able to absorb their fill of it. Um, so um, with that said, I believe we need a motion on this ordinance. Uh, assuming there's no other comments from the board.
We need a motion to uh deem this to be uh consistent with our master plan.
Okay.
Well, given the legal ramifications, I find that the change is uh appropriate and is consistent with our master plan as we have written it with regard to uh especially with regard to finding affordable housing in the town.
Okay.
So moved.
Well, so were there any, I wasn't sure if that was a comment or or a uh.
A little bit of both. It's late, I was combining things.
So is that a motion to find this ordinance com- uh consistent with our master plan, Mr. Dinsmore?
Yes, that's what I did.
Okay. Mr. Mandel, did you second?
Yes, I did.
Okay, Nora, please take the vote.
D. Piero?
Yes.
Dinsmore?
Yes.
Fergieri?
Yes.
Hernandez?
Yes, yes.
Mandel?
Yes.
Mealy?
Yes.
Bonnacken?
No.
And Chairman, as I, as I sit here, by the way, it occurs to me that the township council wants to consider this on December fifteenth, which I think means we're going to need to adopt a resolution prior to that date, which I had not considered until just now. Um, so check your email. I might have to drive Nora nuts as usual, but um we might have to have another two-minute special meeting.
On the fourteenth of that day? We'd need a resolution on the fourteenth?
I think so. Let me confer with the township attorney and see if a, a letter from, from the board secretary will suffice or if he's going to require a resolution.
Okay.
John, I just want to um confirm your vote was no?
That's correct.
Okay.
I'll stand on my island.
Okay.
Okay, um, I believe we've accomplished all of the business for today. Um, I would like to just point out, um, I, I want to hear more about some of the things that uh you as the board members are interested in around town and things that maybe we can uh start to look at to uh to promote from our master plan and and promote these things to the council as as things we'd like to see happen and see if uh maybe we can influence from the planning board to the council sometimes um as appropriate. And so um with that said, please, you know, let me know what you're interested in and we'll see uh what is uh worth bringing forward. I saw some hands go up, so.
Sustainable jersey, that's all I'm saying. Parsippany Green Team. Yeah, that's, that's it in a nutshell.
Yeah, I've been, I've been with Judy, Judy a little bit on that, and there's a sustainability pledge that we need to uh look at and see how our master plan relates to that. So it's on the, it's on the shortlist.
Um, yeah.
The other thing.
There's a lot of action items too in that whole initiative.
The other thing that.
Thank you, everyone.
Thanks, Judy. Um, the other thing that Bruce actually raised a few weeks ago, um, and asked me about was building height um and what we can look at. And I think it's a, it's a question that I'm not going to keep us up. It's a question that's come up a lot in our recent subdivisions, for example. We have some ideas we've been working on a little bit, um, got busy with the actual business of the board. Um, but but Bruce, I didn't get it. And so we've done a little bit of work internally, and perhaps we could get it on agenda in the new year, once we've gotten through some of this backlog.
Yeah, yeah. We've certainly been backlogged, so that takes some of these uh, these uh fun activities out of our purview. But uh Bruce, I know that that's an issue that has come up on several um several of our uh meetings. So thank you for bringing that up. I think it's definitely worth, worth exploring.
You're talking about increasing building height?
I'm sure.
No, sir. Yeah, it it would be, it would be how to, how to make sure that some of the new homes that are being built are not so vastly different. And there's some, some pretty minor tweaks that actually would have a big impact on things like the definition of building height and, you know, and it's in the master plan, some of that, so.
Tom Dinsmore has some great suggestions about how you control building height.
Yep. I think it was a good, good discussion.
We've talked about that before, yes.
Yeah. So I think uh somebody's could be really great opportunities for for you to sort of stretch your wings a little bit more and ma- maybe do some of the things that, that you came to the planning board to try and do. Um, you know, outside of uh of trying to keep the town in uh as great as it is, what are some of the things that maybe we can uh, we can promote from our master plan? All right, uh, so with that said, um, I will accept the motion to close the meeting.
Motion to close for Jerry.
Second, Dinsmore.
Very good. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? None, okay.
John, why aren't you opposed?
I already, I already dissented once today.
His holster's empty.
Nora, you lost your friend.
Hey, guys, this is Earl, and thanks for being so professional tonight. It made my job easier. Thank you.
Thank you, Earl.
Appreciate you, Earl. Thank you.
For the work in the background, Earl.
Yeah. All right, everyone, have a wonderful evening.
Good one, all.
Good night.
Good night, team.